Nice to see you all here this morning. Welcome to our Board Workshop this July 18th. Vice President Crew, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Hand over your heart, ready to begin?
(inaudible)
Seems like a long time since we have had a meeting, Dr. Baker. It's good to see everyone here again and nice to have us in our Board Workshop format this morning. So we welcome those who are here for the purposes of addressing the Board at the proper time and in the order of their requests. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating name and the agenda and item you wish to address. Let these here, are these the only ones that we have this morning? Okay. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the Agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular Agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to any individual members of the Board or staff. Let's start with public testimony on items listed on our Agenda. We have Karen Wassinger? Wassinger? Hi Karen.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Karen Wassinger. I'm teacher librarian at Poly High School. Before that, I was at Lindbergh and Keller Middle Schools where we ran very successful, award-winning waste reduction programs. And so I was very excited to get to Poly and get some of those things I learned started there. Our experiences there are a very good reflection of obstacles faced by many trying to implement green programs across the district, so I'd like to share some of those with you guys. To start with, there was no money for blue recycling bins to get started with basic recycling. For our size, it would've cost about $1,500 to get started. Thank goodness for friends with City of Long Beach Environmental Services that gave us used bins to get started on basic recycling. We also surveyed teachers to get a feel of where Poly was to get started. These were some of the things shared. Quote, "There's nowhere to recycle the stuff, so I bag it and take it home." Quote, "I used to recycle but would then see custodians throwing recycling in the trash." Quote, "I gave up because students did not know what could or could not be recycled." Education is a huge component of successful recycling programs. The need is great and it continues. Frustration of recycling teams is real. There's a constant misuse of purple bins and contamination of recyclables. Our teams often find black trash bags, food waste, and landscaping waste in purple bins that should be containing only recycling items. All recycling is done by student teams and volunteers. Recycling should be part of district operations. When trying to rescue good uneaten food to donate to Rescue Mission prior to winter break, I received a lot of pushback from nutrition services. It took tremendous effort, which was really unnecessary. The food was already being thrown away, as I saw when I walk in to collect the food and calf workers were actually pouring milk down the drain. We were also denied shared tables by nutrition services unless we could provide volunteers to man them. I have about 100 to 150 students at lunch in the library at any time. Students and staff only get 30 minutes to eat and to have some rest time. We cannot have volunteers run shared tables. This could easily be set up and taken down by nutrition services as part of their roles and tasks. It is estimated that 15% of food waste is actually food that can be donated and eaten. Daily, I get students come to me and say, "Ms. Wassinger, you got any food? You got any snacks?" This food could easily go back to our students, could easily be donated back to our communities. Food rescue cannot happen without refrigeration. We keep on getting told, even though there's no Health Department regulation stated that donated food cannot be stored in calf fridges, we keep getting told that. I had a fridge donated from Rogers, had it transferred through Transportation Services, it arrived broken. It had to be discarded.
Thank you.
We need a top-down district-wide program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Weinstein? Good morning Pamela.
All right, good morning. Good to see everyone. My name's Pamela Weinstein. I've been committed to Long Beach Unified for 29 years, and 17 of those I have done site-based green work, including earning the California Green Ribbon at Rogers Middle School. Also co-created the Think Green Program with Karen and Danielle Vandebort. I'm here in support of the Green School Operations Policy and hoping to see even more in the future, as it is needed, to be in compliance and to show our students how to be stewards of the planet. Here's some background context and examples. On May 16th, Sustainability Advisory Committee met with stakeholders and district admin to gain suggestions and comments. All the suggestions that were given were not accepted and the energy policy remains the same as it presented today. Neither the original policy adopted in November 2019 nor today's Energy Addendum addressed recycling. Not paper, not cardboard, batteries, electronics, books, printer cartridges, only to name a few. And just for context, the California law AB 341 went into effect in June 2012, so we are now 10 years behind, which is a big reason why my students many years ago got together and researched these policies. This policy requires public entities such as schools to divert their waste for proper disposal, and many of our schools, as Karen said, have no recycling at all. In the original Green Schools' Operation Policy, number eight, there has been limited or no follow-through with food service-related items, which really results in so much of our trash. There has been some reduction in food packaging, but really the only item in a school lunch that is recyclable is a clean lunch tray. The district's supposed to be encouraging zero-waste lunches, lunches brought from home. There has been no promotion of this. And sharing tables for unused cafeteria food, like Karen mentioned, has been difficult to attain at many schools. Most significantly, SB 1383, effective January 22 and applicable to schools in January 24, will require schools to divert their organic waste, which means that we need to start getting a policy and a system together to recover that edible food. It will be illegal at that time to throw out edible food. In order to do this, the district needs a person at each site to man these stations and to systematically get that food from a student who doesn't want it into some sort of receptacle and then recover it and take it to people that need it. According to the documented task force, will be formed to monitor these policies. Who will be part of this and how will it ensure that all of our sites are in compliance? Thank you.
Thank you Pamela. Dr. Baker, I know that we have a big facilities presentation this morning. Ms. Miranda, I know you're going to touch on some of the comments today, but in terms of some of the issues and concerns raised, Dr. Baker, can we have some follow-up on that?
Sure, and this will be a good time this morning to do a conversation about that.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you Karen, was it Karen or Carol?
Karen.
Karen and Pamela. Diana Michelson. Good morning Diana.
Okay, so we'll just start with some typical introductions again. Hi, my name's Diana. I know I've been here quite a bit, but I am a Rising Senior at Long Beach Poly, so last year at L-BUSD. But I'm here today because over the last two years, actually, with the founding of the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign, we've been working on passing a Green Schools' Operations type document. We've been really excited because over the years, it's transitioned, or specifically over the last couple of months, it's transitioned from a resolution that we were initially trying to pass to actually a board policy. And we're extremely grateful, we've been working a lot with Mr. Rising, who is, he left? Mr. Miranda and Ms. Mogi, I haven't seen her today, but once again, extremely grateful. We've really had the opportunity to let our voices be heard. It's been an amazing process, you know, work on a Google Doc together, literally type words and then see it get included in the document. That has been a really empowering opportunity that I've had with the district. That being said, this document, which is incredibly impressive, there's a commitment to not buy another fossil fuel equipment, to, when possible, prioritize zero emission vehicles. Of course, you know, if we need to replace 10 trucks that year and only eight zero emission vehicles are available, we would have to adjust. But on the whole, it is an incredibly impressive document and we are extremely excited and once again, extremely grateful. I know, Mr. Miranda, once again, thank you so much, we've been working a lot with him. But I think my big takeaway as well is there's still no mention of a date. That's what we've been pushing from the beginning, and I know that there's a task force implemented that is an incredible step in ensuring that this policy is followed through on, but I think that a date is the real way to secure something. At the end of the day, at the current rate that we're going, if we do transition all of our equipment and replace all equipment with zero emissions, we'll be hitting 20, like mid 2040 deadline for zero emissions anyways. So at this point, it just comes down to, will we prioritize this? And I'm sure, I can give you a list of reasons why we need to prioritize it, one of them being that by 2000, by 2100 actually, there will be 37 extreme heat days in Long Beach, so that's over 95 degrees. There are over 275,000 people in Long Beach who are extremely vulnerable to this. This is just one reason. This is a socio-environmental issue and we have to begin prioritizing this. So I think it comes down to, are we willing to push 2030, 2040? And as a student, as a future Poly alumni, L-BUSD alumni, I think that it really comes down to, you know, I want to leave this district knowing that my brother and my sister, my brother is going into the fourth grade, my sister is going into the second grade, that they will be left with a healthy, sustainable Long Beach.
Thank you Diana.
Thank you.
We have Ruthie Heis next. Can you help me with your last name Ruthie?
Heis.
Heis, okay, thank you.
Good try though. Good morning everybody. My name is Ruthie Heis. I am also a member of the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign, and I believe I first started coming to these meetings eight months ago, November, and I first met with some of you individually or had the pleasure of working with you beginning December of 2021. So back then I was 13 and I'm 15 now, which is kind of crazy. In the last two years, I've spent my time working towards reducing L-BUSD's contribution to the very same issues I saw threatening Long Beach. Rising sea levels that endanger ports, wild storms that cause flooding, fires that turn our sky orange over and over again, and a gray haze of ozone that sits on top of all of LA. So my peers' asthma was continuously interrupting their learning, since we seem to have a lot of children with asthma, I don't think any of us here agree that this is a reality we want for Long Beach. These concerns brought this board policy into your hands today, including the insight of many different important L-BUSD voices, teachers, students, staff, parents, and more. Not only will this policy bring us closer to a cleaner and healthier classroom, it will also kick-start L-BUSD's journey towards meeting state requirements that will come into effect in the next couple of years. And like Diana mentioned, a lot of what's written in this policy will help us achieve those 2034 deadlines and make them more feasible than maybe we think right now. With other districts, larger districts like Los Angeles, San Diego, Huntington Beach, Seattle, Miami Dade, Oakland, and many more passing similar policies and resolutions, and already accelerating towards 100% renewable energy, we know this type of transition is the future in a future we are already behind in. Starting now, we'll give L-BUSD the perfect opportunity to make this transition happen sustainably in a way perfect for our students and our communities. I would like to voice that this policy is something hundreds, if not thousands, of L-BUSD students, parents, staff, and community members want to make a reality for their schools. In the past two years, of GSC students coming back to you over and over again to voice the same message shows that this urgency others feel to make L-BUSD more sustainable will not go away with time but get stronger. We are given this unique opportunity through the hard work of facility staff and many other L-BUSD staff to join a future others are already present in. So let's pass 3510.1 and get L-BUSD one step closer to a healthier and happier Long Beach. Thank you all.
Thank you. And our last speaker, is this the last one, let these out, is Pete Marsh? I saw you come in Pete, yeah, there you are.
Good morning. Good morning, Board, Staff, Citizens. Thanks. Pete Marsh, grandparent of three Rising Longfellow Elementary Lions, and have been happy to help the district and the students with the Green Schools Campaign. I've heard a number of concerns about what it's, what are the risks of this green future? And there are six that I've heard most predominantly. Specificity of the ask, cost, technology, infrastructure, risk, and goals. And I'd like to talk really primarily today about cost, which is a big part of your concern about risk. So the, since 2019, for three years, it's been cheaper over just five years to own a Tesla Model 3 than a Toyota Corolla, literally 46 cents per mile versus 49 cents per mile. That future is coming to all electric vehicles and all electrified machines for space heating, water heating, laundry, cooking. We are going to be paying more if we stay with fossil-fired machines from this point forward. So it, there is currently a small upfront price premium. It's a little bit more in CapEx, but much lower OpEx. My Tesla Model Y costs me around $700 per year for electricity for 15,000 miles. That would cost me $3,000 to $3,500 for a gas vehicle right now. There are some who say technology isn't ready yet for the electrified future. We already have all the machines we need to replace fossil-fired machines that are in common use in a school district and most businesses in all of our households, and I listed those purposes already. One special case among vehicles is trucks, and so I'd just like to emphasize, over the last decade, we've gone from where in 2012, we manufactured and sold only 130,000 electric vehicles in the entire world. This year, we're selling 130,000 electric vehicles every week. So that's a 50-fold improvement. That same future is coming to trucks. Currently, United Stateswide, there are only 1,200 battery-powered electric trucks on the road of all categories, Class III and above. But there are 40 manufacturers making 150 different models of trucks, and there are 130,000 orders for those trucks in place. So the future is coming and it'll be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I want to thank all of our public speakers for attending, especially this early in the morning, and I want to particularly thank the students that, as was pointed out, have been coming consistently since 2020 now. So thank you for your advocacy, for your public comments, for your involvement with our district teams' process. Not only have you educated us here with your public comments, but you've been a vital part of the process. I'm sure Mr. Miranda is going to speak to the importance of the community engagement piece. So just wanted to thank you and everyone that's been vigilant on our sustainability efforts and have come and shared your perspectives on how important what's before us is today, not just for our school district, but for all the communities that we serve. We have two big presentations, and I know we'll have two lively conversations and engaging conversations this morning, and I know we're probably going to take up every single minute of that first presentation, Mr. Miranda, so without further ado, let's move forward with our facilities presentation. Welcome, Mr. Otto.
Good morning, members of the Board, Superintendent Baker, senior staff, of course, our wonderful audience, in person and on YouTube. Here we go. So our presentation's now queued up. And you're right on, Dr. Benitez, so why don't we just start there, right, and address the elephant in the room. There's quite a bit to cover via the facilities update at this particular presentation. There's a number of different topics and subtopics. I'm going to do my best to keep the conversation at a very high level, yet walk the Board through each of the different components of importance, just to make sure not only the Board understands and comprehends the master plan, but so too does the public, right? Because it is a large effort. There's really quite a bit for us to cover. I'll go at a healthy pace just to move things along. I want to leave enough time in the presentation for a question and answer session, of course, as well. I'll do most of the talking up here for the three major topics, but at some point about midway through, I'm going to invite Viva to join us to help me speak to the sustainability policy, specifically with respect to the engagement and the process. They helped us get to where we are now. So what you see listed here on this slide is really the subtopics I'm going to be covering. You'll probably take quick note of the fact that they all tie together, right? So the facility master plan, the energy policy we've been discussing, of course, the bond resolution that's up for vote this evening, all tie in. I'll do my best to transition from one topic to the other and to really identify those tie-ins along the way, but you can clearly see the delta, the nexus there. Really what we're looking to highlight, and I'm looking to highlight this morning, and it's really embedded in the facility master plan, is the need. So what do we have left to do? What's out there in terms of capital improvements for the district to embark on? And not only addressing the need and identifying what I would describe as a problem per se, but how can we perhaps solve that problem, right? What's the solution to get us where we need to get as a district? So we're going to start off with the master plan this morning. Of course, most importantly, this plan is very much informed by a number of different individuals, so architects, engineers, industry experts who really helped us get to where we are to date. This master plan sure was performed in concert and with input from various different stakeholders, including facility staff members, quite a few facility staff members. Rather, we leaned heavily on the architects and engineers to perform their study and just do it in an unbiased fashion, right? So they're coming into our district, looking at the nuts and bolts and different components, different infrastructure systems across every single campus, to really take stock and identify what we need to do, propose recommendations, identify key takeaways and so forth. The plan itself is close to 500 pages, right? So we've been discussing this off and on via previous facility updates and presentations. My overriding goal was to, and our overriding goal as a district, was to present this plan in chunks, more digestible chunks, so the Board and the public can comprehend what this plan fully entails, and I'm going to continue that effort today, right? So just walking the Board and the public through each of the different categories, again, addressing key takeaways and so forth along the way. Of course, I'll look to do that today to bring it to a close, because before you this evening will be an Agenda item to adopt this master plan in its entirety. And again, we do have this master plan before you in its entirety at this point in time. So the master plan process really took us the better part of a year. I'd say 11 months and change got us to where we are today. We started last summer in earnest with the facility master plan architect who's Canon Design and their engineering team physically walking every one of those campuses I mentioned. So opening up every single doorway, walking interior and exterior spaces, verifying site information that we had provided them as district staff, confirming certain things, right? So this is in fact a different plan, and I want to highlight that at this point in time. We've had previous facility master plan updates as this district has embarked on various capital facility improvements. This plan is not an update, right? So typically with updates, we go and update cost estimates and projects and just things we've captured from year to year, sometimes decade to decade. This is a new comprehensive report. So we really started from square zero, going out and walking sites, looking at information, fully taking stock to develop the report that we have before you today. I mentioned several site visits and want to thank a number of folks right at this time, right? So the schools opened their doors to us, custodians gave us time to kind of walk facilities with our architects and chime in and give us their input, which is super valuable as well. There's a number of folks in this room who chimed in on this plan, right? And I'll get into the engagement piece a little later, but really big kudos to the Green Schools Campaign, to a number of folks in this room who've helped us via different subcommittees and help inform this plan in its entirety as well. So I'm going to do something I often do and just oversimplify, right? So the facility master plan is really comprised of seven categories, and it's the seven categories you see listed before you and via this slide. So we have our purpose, our process, our results, our recommendations, and so forth. I say oversimplify because some of these categories are a lot more meaty and beefy, right? The facility reports section in particular. So I mentioned this plan in its entirety is close to 500 pages, I believe it's 488 altogether. Well over 400 of those pages are those facility reports. So within a few slides here, I'll actually jump into a sample school report with the tempting goal of just walking the Board and the public through at least one sample report for one particular school site. I picked McKinley for this exercise, and we'll just walk page by page through some of those highlights, and then you'll be able to gather what each of the corresponding and subsequent schools look like, what each of those reports entail throughout that section. There's also a number of deep, deep components that are embedded into each of these subsections. So we've talked about sustainability. It's listed, it's actually included towards the tail end of the appendix of the report, yet sustainability's embedded in at least half of the project priority categories that I'm going to be discussing in a little while, right? It's really at the forefront of what we're looking to do in terms of our future capital improvement projects. And then, of course, finishing up with acknowledgements, because again, there was a number of folks, dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, who participated in the creation of this report. So what was the purpose? And some of these slides are going to be redundant. You've heard some of this information over the course of the past year, yet some folks might be tuning in for the first time and don't know what a master plan really is. So a master plan really serves as a roadmap for capital improvements in the future, right? So a lot to do. Most districts find themselves in a situation similar to ours, where there's more need than there is dollars available, and that certainly is the case for us today, certainly was one of the key takeaways for Canon Design and Architectural Firm as they embarked on this project for us. So again, it's going to serve as a roadmap, help us identify key priorities, help us take stock like we envision doing, and really just identify project priorities going forward. Also going to align us with our educational mission and vision. So this is something I hear as I attend Board meetings regularly, right? And there's presentations from other folks, other administrators in the district, and often the focus is on the education, the student achievement, the overriding goals of this district. We also know facilities and education go hand in hand. So it's very difficult, sometimes impossible, to offer up a certain program if you don't have the facility that's right-sized, or you don't have the facility that has adequate energy, you know, just electrical sockets to be able to plug into. So this is where the tie-in and that nexus is built into the facility master plan, and that remained a focus of ours throughout this entire effort. Then Dr. Benitez, you referenced stakeholder engagement, which I would cover as part of this presentation. That was a large part of this, right? So not only was this plan informed by industry experts, a number of different folks who are in this room, very much informed by stakeholders of our Long Beach Unified community. Teachers, students, parents, non-parents, everybody chimed in and really just informed us and let us know what they'd like to see in terms of future improvements, perhaps give us kudos in certain areas where we're doing good with respect to our current building program, yet identifying things to help gear us towards the future. So there was in fact a number of key takeaways, and a lot of this information, by the way, including some of the graphs and images you see embedded into this presentation, are direct takeaways from the facility master plan report. So some of these things might seem very familiar, and that's by design, right? So again, just highlighting some of the key takeaways, our buildings are old, right? Several of our buildings, many of our buildings are just aging and continue to age. You know, as I embark on a number of different Measure E community-based meetings, as we embark on those type of projects, I've been highlighting for the last couple of years that the average age of a building in Long Beach Unified is 63 years old. Via this effort, and again, this was very helpful for us, we now learned it's actually up to 67 years old, right? So these buildings continue to age, it's something we need to address going forward for certain. The little graph that you see in the image to the top right identifies when these buildings were added to our existing campuses, and you see just a spread across the board, you see certain periods in time, if not decades, where there wasn't much construction going on, right? You see a number of buildings were built in the 40s and 50s and 60s. Those buildings have, in many cases, outlived their useful life. In some cases, they're just screaming for major facility overhauls, correct? We've done some of that, which we're super grateful and appreciative of. Another opportunity for me to thank the community for the passage of Measure E, which has allowed us to embark on a number of different facility improvements, adding HVAC systems, changing infrastructure, embarking on different improvements at our various campuses, just to get us much closer to 21st century learning environments, yet we know there's quite a bit more to do. We've covered this via previous presentations as well, but it was absolutely highlighted via this master plan, and that's declining enrollment and underutilized capacity in the district. So we know at one point in time, and you see it via the image to the bottom right, we peaked, right? So we had quite a bit in So we had quite a bit in terms of enrollment, we're close to that 100,000 mark. And we had to add seats over the years to be able to accommodate that enrollment. We did what most districts do, right? So adding buildings where we could add buildings, yet in many cases adding portable classrooms. And that's the right play. So that's often the right play for school districts, including Long Beach Unified, because that enrollment could be here to stay, it could be here for the long haul, or it could start to dwindle down, which was certainly the case here. So now, a couple of decades later, we've seen some of that enrollment decline. As we go out and visit campuses these days, we see empty classrooms in some cases. In many cases, we see schools spreading out just to better utilize all the different spaces and the square footage that's on their campus. From a facility perspective, that can hurt us, right? So you know, with that many portables on our district, and we have several of them, you know, we're maintaining those spaces also, we're cleaning those spaces on the operational side of the house. So it really starts to use our resources on really what we would call temporary student facilities or student housing facilities versus focusing all of those resources on our permanent square footage. And that's one of the recommendations, one of the key takeaways from this master plan as well. Third key takeaway is really expanding the needs of our facilities for our diverse student population. That's one of the big benefits of Long Beach Unified, of course, right? Our diverse student population, our diverse community. Our schools are all different too, which I enjoy just working in day in and day out, right? Every day we walk into a different project, we work with different architects. They very much respect the architecture and the unique nature of the different communities, and we keep to that, right? So we make sure we don't come in, put our hard hats on and just build a building that doesn't fit on a particular campus. Everything has absolute tie-ins, and there's absolutely that respect in mind. Now, what do we mean in terms of facility improvements for this diverse population? Perhaps it's spaces unique to our special need students, right? So in many cases, those are larger spaces. Sometimes it's spaces that include the ability to lift a student and get them from point A to point B. Those come with various different structural updates, right? So again, unique spaces often require some dollars associated with them. But we want to make sure those spaces are situated in the right place on campus as well, and never an afterthought, right? We've often discussed career tech spaces, which are very neat spaces. Often they're larger spaces, often they include a whole lot of power, different machinery and equipment that gets our students' career ready. We know there's quite a bit more to do just in that regard as well. And then another piece, which I'll highlight in a short while, just as I glanced at Brian Moskowitz here, early childhood education, right? So we know we have a new grade level before us. That's going to entail unique circumstances, which I'll get to in a short while. Some of these slides we've covered, but I felt they're important to bring back again. So again, these are all with respect to our community engagement and really the differentiation from previous master plans to this master plan. Because I feel we did more as a district in terms of just being super intentional, reaching out to different stakeholders. And really what you see before you in the next couple of slides in particular is different subcommittees, right? So we had a district planning committee, which included a lot of different district leaders within the district. But they all came in with their input and their expertise across their specific area of work, which was very neat and very helpful for us in the creation of this plan. We had a stakeholder advisory committee as well. This included no district leaders, right? So this is strictly community-based, volunteer-based, so I thanked every one of them for their time as often as I could. Included a handful of teachers, some folks from the Taub side of the house. We had CSA representation as well. Students were part of that committee. In some cases, there was crossover, but in many cases, we had different folks in each of these rooms. Canon did a good job of quarterbacking every one of those sessions for us. They used some very neat tools and technology that was available to them that wasn't available for us in previous master plan efforts. So folks who would engage via these sessions, many of them being Zoom sessions, would have the ability to still jump in and add notes to our slides and our information we were gathering, right? Perhaps they joined a meeting a little late at one particular session, they'll still have that ability to catch up, review notes via the tools and technology we had available. And then, of course, the furniture piece. This actually started in our facility master plan. So the architects in the room, their consultants who joined them as well, helped us go down this path. At one point, we pulled it out of the master plan though, because simply put, it was go time. So for us to be able to hit our marks in terms of implementation and add the new classroom furniture in every classroom in the district within that three-year stretch we set forth to do, we really had to get going on that effort. So we, in essence, pulled it out of the master plan, jumped right into implementation. Regardless, we got quite a bit of valuable feedback via that subcommittee. Continuing on with that theme of subcommittees, there was a few more. So sustainability, and this one was very engaging. So again, this is one committee where Canon and their team, Eric was actually the architect in charge of that particular committee, really did a good job in terms of setting forth some fun exercises for us, right? So just posing certain questions and getting a ton of dialogue. In many cases, and I truly mean this, you know, the students did such a good job of being engaged, all of the adults in the room just kind of backed off, right? We let them stay at the forefront, we let them continue to dialogue and engage with us and inform this master plan because it was great information, right? So there was no need for any of us to just jump in and kind of steal their thunder. They were really gearing us down the right path, which I loved. Not only did we have a number of different stakeholder committees, we wanted to just, again, be super intentional and get feedback via different formats. So Canon helped us design a survey that went out to the public. We did our best job of posting that and publishing that everywhere so folks could chime in and give us their input with respect to, again, not just current needs, but proposed future needs on the facility front. And there was a ton of feedback that we received via the surveys. We also embarked on a couple of community forums, community meetings where we opened the doors and met in person over at Browning High School. First community forum, not too well attended, it was actually smaller in attendance, but very good in terms of the feedback we got from those folks, right? So in essence, we gathered around a smaller table and engaged in very meaningful dialogue that also helped inform this master plan. The second community forum, heavily attended. So we filled the room, you'll actually see a few pictures here of the interactions that were happening on that particular evening. There was good food to go around that particular day as well. I don't know if that's what attracted the crowd, but we'll take it because there was quite a bit of input we received from the various different folks who attended that community forum. All in all, over 600 participants, right? So 600 different hands into this master plan, and it's really more. So I identified via the previous slide, some of the different subcommittees, the number of meetings that we engaged in and so forth. But there's also all the other conversations that happened offline with the different folks, right? So sometimes the phone conversations, several different emails, just different ways that we dialogued, not just on the architectural team, but the district and house facilities team as well, to gather the feedback we were looking for. So what did we find? I highlighted some key takeaways early on, and those were early takeaways, by the way. Those were things that were just glaring in terms of excess capacity, older facilities and so forth. Additional takeaways and the results and recommendations as we started to frame them are really embedded in this particular slide. So something we've heard via, via board discussion, parent meetings, student dialogue, teacher feedback. We've just heard this across the board over the course of the last couple of years, and that's this need for additional green space. This was also really the number one comment we heard via the survey findings in particular, which was very neat for us. But for me, it just kind of led us down this path of true alignment, right? So if we're starting to hear this type of comment via surveys, via staff presentations, via board meetings, it's screaming out to us in terms of proposed area where we need to perhaps put some dollars to and embark on some projects. Equitable access to programs, of course. So we've, we've been discussing some career tech spaces we have previously. I've pictured or demonstrated via picture some of the cool spaces over at Jordan High School and other high schools in the district. Browning, who I just noted a little while ago, yet there's more to do. So we know that students, parents, community members are itching for more in terms of some of these type of improvements, in particular with respect to some of these career tech spaces, right? So making sure there's equitable access would equate to ensuring that the programs or offerings I have at one particular high school and one region of the district are also spread across the different regions in the district. Student wellness came up quite a bit, which was refreshing, so that was great to see as well. And this could mean a number of different things. Perhaps it's play spaces, perhaps it's gathering spaces, perhaps it's just a space to unwind, right? And you're going to see that embedded in the priorities that we're going to set forth within a couple of slides here as well. Really what started coming across loud and clear was again, something I noted a little while ago. More need than there is dollars available, right? So the more we dove into the master plan and just soaked in the information truly, we saw, you know, we really have our work ahead of us, there's quite a bit to do, yet we're going to have to capture a different funding source to be able to achieve these very things and align us with that very educational mission and vision. When all said and done, and Canon and their team of cost estimators put pen to paper, what they realized and took note of was 3.5 to 3.8 billion dollars of current need on the facility front. What scares me is that number's only going to continue to climb, right? So previously I've shared with the board, we're dealing with issues of labor shortages, supply chain issues, material cost increases on the construction side of the house, a lot of regulation that we deal with on the facility side of the house as well. Those numbers are just going to continue to tick up, perhaps get us closer to the 4 billion range, maybe even the 5 billion range. Because again, buildings will just continue to age year by year and decade by decade. We also set forth 10 project priorities, and we've discussed these, we actually discussed these via the early June board presentation. I'll be very brief in nature in describing at least a handful of those again this morning, but we know what those are, right? What I want to highlight this morning is that alignment of those recommendations though. So every one of those 10 project bucket priorities, bucket priority sections, as I described them, really fall in line with the feedback, the surveys, the community forum information we received. You know, every one of those input gathering sessions led us to those 10 project priority sections. So of course, starting first and foremost with major facility enhancements. So think of this category in terms of renovation, modernization, rehabilitation of current spaces. Again, to get us closer, if not right at that 21st century learning environment section. So what can this entail? You know, perhaps maximizing natural lighting classrooms, LED lighting, just to keep getting us towards the future. New technology as that continues to advance. Clean spaces, modern spaces, you know, things with current technology. And we know that changes year after year as well, just as technology advances. Whoops, I'm actually going to go back, I didn't cover wellness. So with wellness and green space, again, a comment we've heard over and over and over, perhaps how can we address this and tie in to some of our problem areas? Portable removal, right? So we know there's excess space, we know there's excess capacity. I just highlighted how that hurts us on the maintenance and operations side of the house as well. The simple removal of portables in many cases, in particular where we've had the major declining enrollment, can allow us to repurpose that footprint or that space on a campus. We have thoughts and visions for adding green space to those sites. Absolutely adding green space to sites that don't have any, in particular on the play side of the house. So that's at the, you know, of importance to all of us as well. There are going to be several categories or several campuses where they're still holding on to their enrollment, right? So in those cases, perhaps we remove portables, add in a new building, right? So a new permanent building, building up also helps us save on the footprint, right? So going with a two-story structure will allow us to at least create, you know, more play space or perhaps more outdoor learning space, right? So that's really what's at the forefront of this particular category. Earlier I touched on pre-K and TK expansion, and that's something that's in our world right now. Doing a good job this summer in terms of outfitting every transitional kinder space and kinder space with new furniture, which is very neat. Just want to highlight the fact that it's going well. It's a massive project, yet right now we're on schedule and things are progressing as planned. We know with TK and K and those grade levels in particular though, there's certain unique needs, right? So we want to make sure those classrooms aren't just available classrooms on a campus. They're available classrooms and well-defined classrooms in a certain part of the campus, right? So in many cases, that's a space that's within close proximity to a school nurse, definitely within close proximity to a right-sized playground and right-sized restroom facilities, right? Want to also highlight at this point in time, parking and drop-off because we envision that as an absolute tie-in to this particular category. You know, with the TK, the little ones in particular, it's not going to be your, you know, your kids that are biking and walking to school, the ones that are dropped off at the curb and set on their ways. In many cases, if not all of those cases, there's going to be the handholding and walking them to and from the campus. In as many cases as possible, we should really look at expanding our parking lots as a result. Sustainability, of course, a category we've just been discussing for at least a year and a half, two years or so. And that's a good thing. So I highlighted the fact that there's at least half of these project priority sections that include a sustainability component. And I think you see it, right? So if, or as we expand or built upon our well spaces, our green spaces, we're going to be environmentally conscious. As we renovate and modernize spaces, we highlighted how we're not going to go with fossil fuel type systems and mechanical systems, right? There's a number of additional categories that are going to follow, but you're absolutely going to see that connection to sustainability, not just in this standalone bucket, rather across several, one of the buckets that we're presenting today. There's going to be quite a bit more with respects to sustainability in the slides that follow, so I'll save some of that information. But start thinking about certain projects, right? So additional solar, additional renewable type projects. We've done quite a bit as a district, but we know there's more to do in that regard. Health and fitness, another one of these topics that came up via the input gathering process, but has also come up via our board dialogue and discussion in previous presentations. So we know there's quite a bit to do as we walk school sites and see some gym spaces that are starting to show their age. Some locker room spaces, just some fitness rooms that are out there. We know there's quite a bit of work to do in terms of parity and equity in that regard also, right? Because some sites have a little more in terms of that available space, whereas some do not. So that's going to behoove us to identify those spaces, not just in this master plan, but then go forward and identify those spaces as we roll out an implementation plan. We've done quite a bit as a district in terms of safe campuses, right? So I want to highlight some of those things and identify perhaps a couple of areas for growth for us. So fortunate is a district that we did quite a bit of work with respect to single point of entry on every campus. And that's really benefited us in terms of ensuring our campuses are safe. We've done quite a bit in the way of cameras, in particular at the secondary level. Again, another category where we know there's a little bit of more work to do. And then our visitor screening systems, right? So that's super helpful. You've likely visited school sites where you buzz in, you check in, you identify yourself, your purpose for being on the campus before they let you into the campus. Just super helpful. We're actually currently in what we call Phase Two of our visitor screening system process, where we're identifying a second point of entry in many cases within close proximity to pick up and drop off for some of our after-school care programs. In many cases, those are on a far different extreme or end of the campus, so it's going to behoove us to add in those type of systems. So I mentioned cameras and how additional cameras can help us across the board and as a district. And it can, so that's certainly a recommendation that's built into this master plan recommendations. But we've also talked quite a bit about additional site access control. So currently, we're embarking on that type of project via electronic door locks at four school sites and different facilities across the district. We'd like that process to really serve as more of a pilot project to inform us on what we do next. But all indications are that's going well, that's been super beneficial to us and our stakeholders and really our customers at the school site level. And we can envision a day where we embark on that type of project district-wide. I've mentioned, I think Mr. Miller asked me a question, and it led to this answer previously, where one of the very indirect benefits of having site access control and electronic door locks is everybody wearing their ID badge, right? So that's one of those absolute benefits out there, just knowing who's on your campus at any particular time. Folks would in fact wear their ID badge because that's now going to double as their key card to get into spaces. Instructional technology, again, continues to change, continues to evolve. We're doing our absolute best to embark on and enhance classrooms as we, as we go through the Measure E program and renovate school sites. We'll continue to keep close tabs on what the latest and greatest features are out there so we can stay in line with what the school industry is doing. With this particular category, what we envision is quite a bit more in the way of infrastructure though. Think fiber, cabling, those type of backbone systems that are just in need of updating, right? There's more and more, more and more we're putting into school sites and into our educational system that's just technology-based. And of course, that means the backbone needs to be updated in that regard. Career tech, I won't spend a whole lot of time on this particular category. Career tech, I won't spend a whole lot of time on this particular category, we've highlighted this section quite a bit. We just know there's quite a bit more to do to get our students career-ready and of course, hit different parts of the district boundary. Actually, the last slide on project priorities. Community gathering space, professional development space. So this is something I touched on as part of the June 1st board presentation. And what you see pictured there is Browning, and that's by design. Because again, we used that particular site for our community forums. We've previously used that particular site for board meetings and just different gatherings as a district. We wanna make sure we don't tax that site all that much, right? So it really behooves us as a district to try and find something more central, where we get folks to engage centrally in the district, where we get folks to attend our board meetings perhaps in a more central location. And that's something we have identified via this particular category. We also know our TRC space that's used for professional development, additional meeting spaces well for the district and different folks. Primarily, actually I believe entirely, I'm looking at Allen comprised of portables, right? So those spaces have absolutely outlived their life or are getting close to that point. And we know there's something we need to embark on just to improve that particular facility. That one's very well situated, right? So in terms of access and freeway access and being central, it's a great location. We just know there's a bit of work for us to do to get that facility up to where it should be. Okay, I'm gonna switch gears briefly. I mentioned earlier that I wanna walk you through just one particular school site and I'm gonna choose McKinley. So I figured that's what we do here. What you see pictured is actual pictures of pages pulled out of the master plan and that appendix section in particular. Every school site has those type of pages, right? So if you were to pick on Jordan or Milliken or Emerson, any particular school, you're gonna find that four or five pages that follows for that particular campus. So I'll be brief and just walk you through some of the highlights of each of those sections. But what you see in what we call the Facility Assessment Summary is a number of different indexes. So one of them's labeled education, the other one's labeled facility condition, and the other one's labeled capacity. And you see a score attached to each one of those categories. So I would just wanna highlight very briefly what each of those scores entail, and I'll actually go backwards. So in terms of capacity, that one's crystal clear, I believe. You know, a good score would be good utilization of permanent school capacity, right? So I have an enrollment that's X, I have a capacity that's Y. How much, how many of those kiddos are attending or getting instruction in permanent building space? And that's really what the purpose of that particular exercise was. With respect to facility condition, almost what it's sounding like, right? So think of the different building components that are out there, be it electrical, plumbing, sewer systems, those type of features. And our architects and engineers assigned an index just to be able to rate what each of those systems are currently functioning at, what their useful remaining life is, to get us to a score. What you're likely gonna see is the schools where we've embarked on on Measure E updates are gonna be associated with a good score. Perhaps the schools where we've yet to get to our Measure E program are gonna have a score that's hurting a little bit. And then the other index identified education, I believe. Don't think of that in terms of academic achievement or what we're doing out there in terms of teachers and educators. Think along the lines of that connection that I described earlier. What is our, what are our educational goals, mission and vision? How do they relate or how can we go do those things via the current facilities we have? I'll also shed light and kinda remind folks of our educational specifications we set up in facilities. So we actually had a different architectural firm a couple of years back help us align ourselves on the facility side of the house with educational specs. So this would be that score. How are we doing with respect to meeting our educational spec? In some cases, that's things like the size of the classroom, you know, the availability of different unique spaces for special ed, for different program offerings in the district, and do we hit those marks? This sheet's actually one of my favorites because I just love cheat sheets, right? So having at a quick glance and at our fingertips, those fingertip facts that we all know and love. So square footages, number of classrooms, number of parking stalls, acreage for particular school sites, and of course, that was all informed via massive spreadsheet that's part of this process as well. But these fingertip facts have actually already proved useful for us via different departments, right? So often we get those phone calls from the maintenance side of the house or operations side of the house, the education services side, asking, "David, how much square footage do we have in the district? David, how many classrooms total do we have in the district?" We now have an absolute update via this well-informed exercise, which is gonna be very neat for us as a district.
Mr. Miranda, Board Member Kerr just pointed out that McKinley was constructed in 1934. So little trivia, what's the oldest elementary school in our district, when was it constructed?
Oldest elementary school? I don't know, I may have to phone a friend and call Alan Rising here.
Lowell Elementary School.
What's the date of construction?
1920, don't quote me, and it's 23 or 24.
So almost 100?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, great trivia. What you see next is a few aerial images for this particular campus and a whole lot of color coding. So really what we wanna identify here is differentiation of permanent building space versus portable building space and identifying each particular building in terms of their facility condition index. So in some cases, we've built schools in their entirety, all in one shot, you know, maybe in 1923 or 34. In several cases though, we add buildings over the years and over the decades. So one particular building on the site might be hurting quite a bit from a facility perspective, whereas some of the other buildings might be in decent or good shape. So we wanna make sure on a campus-by-campus basis, we're identifying the actual need and facility condition by building, and that's what this image does for us. And then the, oh, actually, the next overview section is one of my favorites because this one here really starts to identify particular observation and notes on a campus-by-campus basis. And again, this is something we set forth to do as part of this master plan, to have a school-by-school assessment and list of recommendations that we wanna embark on or should embark on from a capital improvement standpoint. And this, this section in particular starts to get us there. So with McKinley, some of the key takeaways for me via that note section was you see a whole lot of play space out there, but it's all blacktop, right? So we don't have much, if anything, in the way of green space. We certainly don't have much in the way of trees providing shade out in that particular area. And we know there's actually another really cool improvement that Canon recommended via this master plan. And that's having painted surfaces to really reduce the heat index in particular locations, this being an ideal one for that. So if you just kinda peruse through the master plan, those site assessment reports, you might see those particular themes repeated over and over. And then the last section for that particular category is our nutrition services plans. And I'll just kinda focus your efforts in on the left side of the image, so where you see the floor plan. Really, this is something we see across several one of our elementary sites in particular. Small spaces, right? So spaces that are not conducive to good fast-speed lines to get kids in and out of that space and give them more time to eat and play, of course. What's proposed here is a small building expansion. And this particular building expansion includes a space for cold and dry storage, basically. So having that particular space set aside as part of the new building footprint as we would propose it allows us to repurpose and maximize the current building footprint. There's also quite a few notes embedded in this report with respect to the dining spaces on our school sites. Again, just of absolute equal importance, how do we make those spaces more inviting in particular? And that's a particular category where our nutrition services folks commented on quite a bit. How do we make our spaces more inviting so kids wanna come and eat lunch here? So next we have sustainability as part of this facility master plan. And that's something we've been discussing also for the good part of the last year and how really our goal and our charge has been, how do we incorporate sustainability, clean energy and other components and embed them into the actual implementation and actionable goals, actionable goals in the master plan? As we embarked on the various exercises and talked to the Sustainability Committee folks and just other stakeholders who took interest, what we saw is everything was aligning across 12 different categories, just on the sustainability front, right? And several of those were addressed during public comment today. So addressing food waste, addressing recyclable, recycling programs, addressing renewable energy and so forth, and many, many more, right? So all important. For us, it was a very useful exercise just to put everything out there at the outset, identify some potential goals that we could embark on and really kinda get us centered and focused perhaps on where we could address some things such as what I'll call low-hanging fruit, right? Is there certain things we could and should be doing out there right now? And Canon and their team helped us identify that very thing. So in terms of the sustainability investments, I titled the slide this way because the report is titled as such as well. So again, if you peek at the appendix section of the facility master plan, you'll find the sustainability report prepared by the consultant. And they basically categorize goals and actions that we could embark on as a district on the sustainability front across each of those 12 buckets. They also helped us identify, based on industry knowledge and their industry expertise, and also based on incorporating some of the feedback we've been talking about. Where is that low-hanging fruit? What should the priorities look like on a scale of 1 to 5? So that particular report identifies every one of these different types of improvement, helps us gear towards perhaps a priority one items first, then growing into item number two, number three, number four, and so forth. They went with a very cool kinda Yelp restaurant review approach of identifying a cost factor to each of these components. So you might see $1 sign versus two versus three or four. And that just puts a price tag to each of these proposed improvements, which is very helpful for us as well. I thought that was very neat in terms of that particular report. We also know that we've been describing this report as a living document or a living report. So right now it's a snapshot in time, but we want to and we will continue to update this report via staff updates internally. And perhaps priorities change and shift, right? So there could be something that's a priority one right now versus a priority four or five. Some of those things may flip-flop based on additional feedback and comment we receive. There's gonna be more in my presentation with respect to a task force we wanna develop, but I envision the task force playing a hard and heavy role in that regard. Any, do we wanna take maybe a few questions on that facility master plan section first before diving into board policy?
Let's do that, Mr. Miranda.
Perfect.
Colleagues?
Well, I'll start us off. Back where there was a slide showing enrollment over the, over the years, it seems to me that our numbers are nearing the numbers that we had in the early 1900s, which really surprised me. And I, I think we have school campuses older than Longfellow because the district itself is over 130 years old. And I know that our, our first high school was Poly, but not where it sits today. It was in a different location, but it was badly damaged in the 1933 earthquake. And so most likely, we had other school campuses as well that were damaged in the 1933 earthquake. But I think Edetta, which was formerly named Lee, might be one of the older campuses that we have.
You're right, that's a great observation. And for us, as we put on our facility hat, we think, how do we get back to our permanent square footage, right? So if we were, if we, if our enrollment was such and it was better aligning with our permanent square footage before we started adding on several portable classroom units, it really feels like it's gearing us back towards that line. Any additional notes, questions, takeaways?
So can we sort of step back to the big picture that you started with, Mr. Miranda? And I'd love to hear from Dr. Baker and exec staff on this sort of broad question. So you sort of frame this around how facilities go hand-in-hand and capital improvements go hand-in-hand to our district being able to fulfill our educational mission and vision, particularly around excellence and equity. And I love that you started off with the major considerations, right? We have aging facilities, McKinley 1934, Lowell 23 or 24, or 22, around there. I'm gonna follow up with you on that one, Alan. We are in a different place also, just as an educational system than we were even 20 years ago. Not even going back to the last century. So when you talk about a different era of education, it's also embedded in our shift to just accessibility and just different technologies and different needs of a 21st century educational system and economy. So I wanna add just one more observation with Ms. Craighead's comments around decline in enrollment and underutilization. It's expensive to continue using space that we needed for 100,000 students. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's cheaper just to downsize either, right? So the complexity to me around underutilization, juxtaposed with declining enrollment is important for the last sort of consideration, Mr. Miranda, and this is the big one. The diversity of our student needs, all right, and the communities that we serve. So I'd love to hear just a reiteration, Mr. Miranda, and again, I would include Dr. Baker and the exec team, on how closely connected our facilities and capital improvements are to meeting the needs of our students at this point. And that includes, you know, potentially students with disabilities, right? Potentially issues around equity. What keeps on standing out and when we briefed, Mr. Miranda, is the conversation we had with the students at Jordan. And multiple students talking about their parents and their families not wanting them to go to Jordan, right? So in terms of a community school and the role that a community has vis-à-vis having pride in the school, not just in terms of what it looks like, although that's super important, but what kind of education we are delivering at the school. A student said, "My mom," I remember this vividly, "changed her mind about Jordan and now she wants my younger sibling to come here." And she attributed that, along with some of their students, to the improvements at Jordan, right? That Jordan is now a school, from an outside perspective, with stigma that was attached to it. And I'm not even getting into right or wrong, base or baseless. There was a self-acknowledgement there from that student's family that they did not like that school because of the stigma attached with it. So the broad end of the question is, please reaffirm, re-articulate, reiterate for us how important it is to have facilities that allow for our district, that necessary for us to fulfill our educational vision and mission, Mr. Miranda.
I'm just wondering if you wanna spend a little time talking about the Equity Advisor that was part of the Canon team and kind of the approach? Because you named that this is not a revision to prior plans, but you started at zero and built from there. And I think that was certainly a way that you helped to operationalize an excellence and equity vision through this process, maybe start there and then...
Absolutely. So there's a good point in time for me to give her kudos as well, right? So she was another instrumental part of our team as well. And frankly, you know, when Canon interviewed and was competing with different firms, that was one of the components that edged them over the top of their competitors, right? Bringing forth an equity consultant to their team. This particular gal was with us every step of the way. She was with us, helping us inform our approach via different meetings and different dialogues, really pushing us in certain cases, which I absolutely appreciated, right? So have we considered X, Y, or Z? Let's make sure we don't forget about our language interpreters and have them available for this particular meeting or that meeting as well, right? Just at every turn, we were talking equity, right? Which was, it was refreshing, it was really good. The other piece I wanna highlight is, and it's tied into this master plan, of course, and you probably see it embedded in a number of these project priority categories. You know, often I find myself as I'm presenting, speaking to the classroom spaces, the learning environments, and we absolutely wanted to make sure we did not lose touch of the other spaces on the campuses. The kitchen spaces, the multipurpose rooms, the dining spaces, the auditoriums, libraries. Media centers, of course, was a focus of one of our last project priority sections. But every one of those is super important, right? From the wellness side, the student gathering side, just kinda the well-rounded student as I call them, right? So everything absolutely ties in. We know students are gonna be a whole lot more focused as they embark on their daily activities if they're well-fed and they had a good breakfast. We need the facility to be able to do so. We know the student's probably gonna be more focused if they're engaged in some play throughout the day versus just sitting in the classroom. And I referenced furniture, which is an absolute game changer for our district as well, right? So having the ability and the furniture that serves every one of our different unique students. And again, on the equitable front. So even as we embarked on that particular exercise for feedback with respect to the furniture we're gonna embark on, we heard from a number of different stakeholders. We had open houses in different parts of the district. We had open houses in different parts of the district, just to absolutely get that buy-in from all of the stakeholders, right? But we see it. So, you know, Alan Rising and myself, we visit school sites regularly, not just in this district, but with neighboring districts as well. And I think that's when I often see more of that tie-in, right? So I won't pick on a particular district by name, but perhaps when I visit a facility that's not checking all those boxes that we are, right? That's when it jumps out to me even more. And I start thinking along the lines of, how can they offer a good educational program if there's no natural light in this space? If, you know, the kids are focused or distracted because the classroom setting is just not right? And those are the type of things we were discussing regularly via our exercises. How do we set forth, and we hate calling it the 21st century learning environment, right? But how do we have the right learning environment for students in our entire district?
Just, that's a great segue or lead into the question and comment that I had that is similar to Dr. Benitez's, and you talk about this 21st century learning space. I think one of the slides that's most telling for me is the construction timeline from the 20s, the facilities on the facilities age and condition one. And all of the building, obviously, that was done in the 30s, early 40s and 50s, and you talk about that Lowell. And then we started some building, you know, in the OOs. And when we give these presentations and when we have meetings with the community, we tend to do those meetings in the newer facilities. We highlight Jordan's media center. We talk about Browning's facilities. We talk about the advanced manufacturing lab at Jordan. Those pieces that have been built with future learning in mind are those spaces that are most critical to the work and most critical to the community. And I know as a parent, even walking into Longfellow and going back into schools and for folks who have been in this district for generations, they walk into classrooms that they have made have gone to, and there's minimal changes. Like there's a projector on the ceiling is the difference. So there is this static where a majority of our facilities are locked in time because it takes a major renovation or a complete rebuild to align with what we hope is the education of now and into the future. So I think that timeline is really telling, and especially to the diverse student population. We talk about our special education students. We know that our medically fragile students and students who require additional facilities just to get through the day, those are at our newer facilities where those students are being best served. And we're trying to adapt older buildings to make them work in the best way possible. But we know that at Dooley, which is one of our older, newer older schools, however we want to say that, that there are adequate facilities. We know we're building a whole new building at Jordan to address that. McBride was built with the intention of serving students with disabilities at every level. So understanding that diverse population, and when we talk about 21st century learning, as you said, this isn't about tweaking what we have, it is how do we envision and make the best opportunities available for every student moving forward? So I just wanted to add that because those are the things that I think of, that we really do spend a lot of time talking about our older, newer schools, or even our newest, newest schools. And I appreciate those 488 pages that talk about every school site. And while they're doing phenomenal work, and our teachers are doing great, and our students are working hard, there's work to do to make sure that that continues in a more vigorous and intentional way moving forward. So thank you for all that.
Right on. Great comments.
How are we addressing the future as far as trends in enrollment? I know we've been experiencing declining enrollment for several years now, but how are we anticipating enrollment trends in the future? And how does that fit in with our projections as far as the temporary buildings and that type of thing?
Great question. So part of the exercise we embarked on was in fact a look at our enrollment and enrollment projections, just in the formulation of this particular plan. Going forward though, and again, I spoke to the fact that this report is a snapshot in time, we want to make sure we continue to look at that trend. So working closely with our research folks, our educators, just different stakeholders in the district to reassess on a year-to-year basis. We know early childhood TK offerings should help us a little bit, right? Just in terms of additional influx of enrollment here in the next handful of years, which will be great. Yet I'm also going to bring the conversation back to portables again in our existing space because the master plan sets forth a game plan for what we could do with portables. I mentioned certain projects that we could embark on with removal of portables in addition of new permanent buildings, removal of portables in addition of green space or outdoor learning space. In several cases, though, we might want to also hang on to a certain percentage of portables, right? Just to have that swing space. What if we get a sudden spike in enrollment? We want to be ready for that. Last thing I want to do as a facility director is embark on a project where I eliminate a bunch of portables and two, three, five years later, add in two or three additional portables, right? So I think we'll always have that swing space for, you know, just different fluctuations in enrollment, but also because some of the projects we want to embark on will really entail conversion of existing space also. So we know in many cases, right now, we have sites with smaller classrooms, right? Perhaps those smaller classrooms, we want to start tearing down walls, and instead of having a row of three rooms, we have two larger sized rooms, right? So it's really going to play with our formulas and our numbers in terms of what capacity starts to look like as our building program goes down the line, and then that constant revisiting and looking at enrollment, right? Just to see where things stack up.
This is also an area that utilizes external tools as well as internal tools. So working with census data, we go back to why the census data is important for a decade worth of opportunity for us to use data, but then also internal tools, working across business and the level offices around what we see happening in specific neighborhoods, but a really good, I think, just use of tools to make decisions about the future, both internal and external.
One of the things that struck me... One of the things that struck me in studying this and reading about things is that, you know, this works because it's a public school system. It gives us a flexibility with 21st century learning. It gives us flexibility with, I mean, we learned that students can learn in different ways in the last two years than we ever thought that they could. Not that we advocate people learning at home necessarily, but it's going to change. And what we have in a public school system, in the Long Beach system, is the ability to do things that individual or even clusters of private schools couldn't do because of all the things that have to go on. Not only is it the data, the demographic data, but it's just critically important that we emphasize that we're not good because we've got a bunch of sites that we're individually dealing with, but collectively, it's very important that we think of this as a system and that we can move people around and we can do different things. And I don't know, I haven't thought clearly through yet how that affects our planning, but I think that it has some role. And so I don't want to lose sight of that.
For sure. Yeah, to the community members that may be watching and are thinking, okay, so, you know, we need more money for facilities, basically. If we need around, if the need was identified at around $3.8 billion, I would just, you know, remind folks that if we are educating for the purposes of the knowledge and the skills that we need in this century, you talked about career tech ed as an example, Mr. Miranda, we don't have capacity right now to truly, you know, educate students for what they may need in the next 20 to 25 years, all right? So yeah, fabulous tour of Jordan. It's fabulous looking at the ways that we deliver instruction, but not all of our campuses are adequately funded right now. When we talk about funding and folks hear about, you know, districts and our district in particular getting additional funding, that's not money that we can use for the kinds of capital improvements that are needed to, as an example, if the cost of labor continues to go up because we have shortages of skilled labor and we can help to produce critical shortages in California through CTE, through those sectors that get grant funded through CTE, then we need the facilities to make that happen, right? So on the one hand, we can't say, hey, why don't we do more CTE without the funding? On the other hand, without this facilities master plan, we have no way of identifying what's needed at what schools equitably to be able to utilize if indeed we acquire additional funding. So thank you, Mr. Miranda. Just on a closing note, before you move on to the next section, we haven't gotten an update on surplus properties in a while. So if we're talking about underutilization, and then, you know, we went through this phase where we were getting sort of ongoing updates on surplus properties, it'd be good, you know, down the line to get an update on where we're at with our surplus properties.
Right on. And we've made some headway there, so I'll make sure as part of our next facility update, perhaps we include that update.
Thank you.
Perfect. So we'll switch gears slightly because again, every one of these components and subsections are all tie in and go hand in hand. So I want to speak to our energy policy for a little while here. And actually, at this point in time, why don't we have Viva start making her way up here? Because I'll be brief in my comments. So first and foremost, we've talked about engagement, in particular with respect to the facility master plan, but we also know there's been a ton of engagement in terms of getting us to where we are today in terms of an update to the board policy. Lot of student leaders in the room who have chimed in and participated via the various engagement efforts. Again, I highlighted a lot of different phone calls and emails we've received from a number of different folks who are not in the room, and it's been fun. It's been fun to just review and soak in the information, to look for connections in certain points, which there absolutely was, and that really helped inform the policy that we have before you today. So I'm highlighting here a few key groups of stakeholders who helped us in this process. Green Schools Campaign being one of the key groups that we've engaged with over the better part of a year plus, I'll say. Our Sustainability Committee, primarily led by Kristi McFagan in the district, but engaging and talking to a whole lot of educators in the district, getting feedback from those particular folks with respect to what we're doing on the clean energy and green side of the house, perhaps identifying things we're not doing, right? And really helping us via those particular discussions, tying in the educational components, right? So what are we doing in the classroom to better inform our kids, our future leaders, on what these impacts are as well? We also had an environmental sustainability committee that was part of the master plan effort, right? So I highlighted that we had at least three different discussions with that particular group, also highlighted the fact that there was some overlap. So some of the folks who participated in one or two of these committees could have participated in all three, actually, and it just shows their passion for this particular topic, which we can appreciate. So I'm starting with, and again, this is a slide we've shared before, Board Policy 3510, and a summary of our current Green School Operations Board Policy that was adopted by the board in late 2019. So this particular green school operations policy entails a number of different things that really impact and coincided with the work of different departments in the district, be it transportation, nutrition services, the maintenance side of the house, certainly the operations side of the house. Because some of those particular areas of work and goal settings include those operational type components, the actual products we use in and out of different school sites, right? So these are just some of the highlights. We didn't want to put the entire policy before you again, but these are some of the highlights and takeaways we took from the current policy, which really led us down the path of developing 3510.1, which we want to discuss next. So let's have Viva up here to discuss process.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I do want to kind of go in, this is a brand new policy that is an extension of the Green School Operations Policy. This was a process that began before I started at the district in 2020. And when we say there was a lot of engagement, this was over a dozen meetings with various stakeholders. And what we took that as is like a listening and learning from both sides. And we talked not only about just this energy policy that's in front of you today, but about sustainability, environmental justice, and the impact of climate change. So for me also is a great, like, learning opportunity to really understand what's going on the state level, local policies, and other school districts. So I did a lot of research on what's out there right now, what are the state mandated policies? Do we need to update this? And one of the key things that we heard directly from students is that they wanted a new policy because they wanted something that was like clear and achievable. And so after gathering so many different types of policies and trying to understand what is also achievable at a local school district, we were able to kind of learn from other school districts as well, but also learn from the students and decided to actually draft a brand new policy that I kind of like first drafted, and then we worked line by line with students. It was, got a little bit messy at times, but I think that what the goal was to be able to have a co-created policy that we both felt like we were united and that we worked through a lot of the details that David will kind of like really expand on as the expert, to be able to draft something that the district will feel very proud to be able to achieve with around energy. And also the students felt like they really had a chance to be able to not only put in their input, but actually, some of the languages in there are student, kind of like they drafted it for us. And so I felt really honored to be part of this process. And I think one of the big highlights that it will say in the policy is there's going to be three clear implementation goals that the district will take on, and I'm going to pass it back on to David so he can like walk through what those are.
Thank you, Viva, and thank you for giving me a breather. So a couple of those highlights, and I really want to focus in and key in on those three particular goals and implementation sections that Viva teed up for me. So first and foremost, and there's a word that just jumps out to me here, or two words perhaps, and that's energy focus. So for this particular exercise and taking from what Viva just described, in terms of perhaps, you know, some of the process and dialogue and discussions get messy at times, it's because it became overwhelming, right? With sustainability, I previously discussed 12 different categories. There's probably more, right? More categories just from that different section. So what we saw just at a quick glance was, let's start taking this particular work in digestible chunks also. So we thought the right approach at this point in time is to just focus in on this new policy, 3510.1, with an energy focus in mind. And then we'd go back and revisit, engage in quite a bit more dialogue to address some of the other categories, because we do in fact still need to do those things. By other categories, I mean the recycling, the food waste, those type of items as well. It's just going to entail a lot more discussion, right? So we've talked about the engagement efforts with the Green Schools Campaign and other stakeholders via different committees, and how that's really taken up the better part of a year, right? So it may take us quite a good chunk of time, if not several months, to engage with various different stakeholders to talk about those other sustainability categories as well, right? So again, that's why the energy focus at this point in time. With the different goals, and they're outlined here in items two, three, and four, just in terms of a quick visual, and these are just direct words we took from the proposed board policy that we're going to have before you that will be up for vote. So the first one being, yes, really what we do in terms of our major capital improvements. So we know right now we're embarking on quite a few Measure E projects. They're HVAC and modernization related for the most part, yet in some cases, we're doing work in terms of new buildings. We referenced Jordan a short while ago. We have a new building we built at Milliken just a short time ago as well. And there's also a number of athletic-based improvements that we embark on from year to year. Really what our goal will be effective immediately is to shift gears and go away from fossil fuels and go into more clean energy, building components, machinery, and the like. And again, just informed by industry experts, informed via this stakeholder gathering process, and will be further and more deeply informed via this task force we want to create. So we know we've set forth these goals. Our heart is definitely in the right place and we want to hit those marks. That task force can help keep us honest going forward as well. So we know via the task force, they'll be there to help us, you know, go down the right path, help us report on what we've done as a district, help us identify perhaps, or even dialogue in terms of the reprioritizing that I discussed a short while ago, because that might happen as well, and then we'll be right back in front of the board. We know we can go this route. It's much easier to do with new building construction efforts because we're just designing things from the ground up, but we know there's also these type of improvements and elements we will absolutely incorporate into our modernization scope of work, and we can do that right away, in particular on the projects where we've yet to design those improvements, right? Because there are several that are just too far along or finishing construction at this point in time. We want to let those play out. Part of that also entails a phase-out schedule. So, and I actually just teed it up for myself. So there's a number of projects where we're finishing construction or we recently completed construction efforts, where we still have some of the fossil fuel technology, right? So there, we want to let those systems live their life. I don't want to put a date range to that because those could differ based on the different school set. school setting, the different lifecycle of those specific components. But regardless, we want to commit as a district and via board policy to, in fact, phase those systems out when the time is right. And we'll identify an actual implementation and phase-out schedule that we'll work on next. Next is vehicle emission reduction. So, and I agree, I think Mr. Marsh alluded to this, Diana alluded to this as well, just in terms of where society is, where the industries are, and they've advanced quite a bit, right? You know, those of us who watch TV see a lot of commercials out there nowadays in terms of different vehicle offerings, they've all been tasked with getting us to cleaner energy vehicle fleets. You know, there's grants available on occasion for clean energy buses and so forth, and we're going to go chase after those as best we can. We know there's actually a big effort we need to embark on on the front end, though, and that's our infrastructure, right? So if we're going to have a clean energy fleet, we need to have charging stations spread across the district as well, not just as at our primary facilities where we store the, you know, where we have the bus yard or the maintenance vehicle fleet, but at different points in the district as well. So the infrastructure piece in particular will be very big. Diana, in her comments, alluded to a very cool scenario that I want to tie into as well, right? So that's the purchase of perhaps 10 vehicles, right? So maybe at that point in time, there's only eight vehicles on the yard available for us to purchase, and then I think we just revisit that particular point. Let's, in fact, buy those eight vehicles that are clean energy-based, but then what do we do? Do we buy two perhaps that are just reduced energy in a sense, right? Not all the way there, but still get us part of the way there? Or can we table that conversation for later? In taking stock and working hand in hand with our maintenance folks and fleet operators, can we wait a little while to purchase those additional two vehicles? Perhaps, and perhaps not, right? But those are the conversations we'll be having going forward. And then the task force, because I absolutely want to highlight that, I'm sorry, I skipped one, renewable projects. So, and I highlighted this as part of the previous presentation on the master plan front, we're already in the early planning stages for some additional renewable work via solar carports, but we're going to continue to revisit that particular topic really, you know, every year at least, right? If not more often, just to identify potential school sites where we have that large electrical demand, and do we have the footprint to be able to do something out there as well? In closing with the task force in this particular subsection. So embedded in the board policy that's before you is the creation of a new task force on the sustainability front. We identified it as such that there will be at least seven members on that committee, there could be more. I imagine there's going to be quite a bit of interest to serve on that committee as well, even though it's going to be volunteer-based like several of our committees. We'll task somebody on our facility side of the house with quarterbacking that process as well, and we have good talented project managers and folks on our side of the house who can do such, right? So what we envision is regular meetings, regular updates, sharing of information, perhaps revisiting priorities, and reporting back to the school board at least annually, just in terms of what we've done to reach our sustainability goals. Additional next steps, because I feel that's actually the key one for us, the creation and establishment of this committee, right? So what do we do next? What do those metrics look like? What type of folks are we looking for? Previously, I gave a comparison of our Citizens Oversight Committee only because of, you know, meeting frequency and reporting and the like, but also hitting different positions, right? So on our Citizens Oversight Committee, we have representation from different stakeholder groups. I envision we would do the same thing on this sustainability committee as well. We know there's further research for us to do. So we have our work cut out for us in terms of really taking a deeper dive into these other sections, because again, truly focused on energy at this point in time, only because we feel the conversation has advanced so far in that regard, we're not going to lose sight of those other green components. Actually, that's going to be on our to-do list going forward. And then that will likely lead us into perhaps another new policy, if not another policy update, right? So that's really what you see there in terms of future board policy conversations and And then bond resolution, really just want to, go ahead, yes, let's field, let's field some questions and comments there.
On the policy that we'll be taking action on tonight. Colleagues, any questions or comments on just the proposed policy? Mr. Miller?
Thanks. All right, so I had a couple of questions and comments. First, I'll go to the, what I would think is the easier one here in regards to 3510 with implementation goal number two. It says ensuring that the facility's constructions and renovations comply with the green building standards. Are we talking about all new projects moving forward being LEED certified? Are you saying that just the construction standard will be under our green building standards? Please help.
Yeah, so this particular reference is really with regard to our new green building code that the state is putting before us. So the state architect, who we funnel every one of our project plan and approvals and reviews through, updates their building code, but at least every three to five years or so, correct Alan, three years? So the new update in particular is what we're all referring to as the green building code, right? So we know we're going to have to match up and already tie in to the green building code in, across every one of our building efforts, both on the new construction and modernization side of the house as well. So I hope that answered that particular part. In terms of LEED, that's actually identified as a potential goal in our sustainability plan, that's embedded in the facility master plan as well. So we know that that's a particular item of discussion, and we just want to engage in a little more dialogue there. I can't recall offhand which priority point that was given in terms of that priority one through five section, but we do have a reference to potential LEED certification in the master plan as well.
And also, in relation to that, but not necessarily speaking to the LEED certification piece, earlier it was spoken to that when it came to our students, they had the statement that students wanted something that was clear and achievable. They've been a part of this process the entire time. Everyone understands that when we're talking about achieving a goal, there has to be strong standards set and a timeline. There was spoken to earlier about the request of a timeline on such policy here, but unfortunately, we weren't able to provide that. Can you speak a little bit to kind of what the thought process was and upcoming information on this?
We'll do. So while perhaps there wasn't direct alignment with respect to setting a clear timeline for some of these improvements, there was absolutely direct alignment in terms of having items that are clear and achievable, right? And I think that's where we hit the mark. So if you review not just this board policy, but also take a deeper dive into the sustainability report, that again feeds into the master plan, but can also be a standalone document on its own, I feel strongly that's what gets us there. So there's clear goals identified, there's clear priorities with dollars assigned to them. Every one of our building projects is going to have sustainability in mind going forward, and we're definitely committing to that as a district via this board policy. And I feel that particular tool, the sustainability report, I'll call it, is going to be a reference tool as we have these task force meetings, right? So we're going to go back and reference that particular goal-setting tool, the report itself, and just go line by line and identify what we've done, perhaps what we haven't done, and why, right? So in the case of the vehicle example, we'll be able to describe, look, we wanted to go out there and purchase 10 new vehicles that are clean energy, there was only eight available, right? So I think we'll have that very dialogue that's super direct. But I feel the sustainability report gets us there in terms of having clear, actionable items that we'll be able to report on.
Okay. And I agree, I know for me personally, when we're talking about the larger goal, right? I am a firm believer in setting high-achieving goals, and you hear the cliche, aim for the moon and you land in the stars. I think that having firm dates, even higher achieving than the expectations held to us by the state would be beneficial within this policy here, so. But I know that you all are working really hard on, obviously, not only meeting the standards that are held to us by the state, but at the same time, I personally would feel more comfortable with having firm standards put in the policy.
Sure. Yeah, just building on Mr. Miller's thoughts. So I also agree for the aspirational goals, and it's actually based, for the most part, on what you and Alan have briefed us on, David, that the state in some, in many ways, has already set 2030 and 2045, right? So even if we were just to be in compliance, and I know we're shooting for more than that, I think it is important, I think it leaves embedded institutionally in a policy beyond potentially our service here, right? You know, 10 years down the line, I may not be here, but a policy that we're considering would reflect that. So I do think it is worthwhile, even if it's only, and I'm not trying to trivialize or minimize, with things that were already targeted by vis a vis state, timelines and targets would be important, because then within that, the strategies that you're talking about specific to, you know, that moving target of do we have eight cars or 10 cars, and when do we transition, you know, in terms of timelines for fossil fuels? Those are the details, all right? Those have to be revised, changed, based on contextual circumstances, but the aspirational goals are still there for us. So I too would ask staff to consider attaching some alignment in those aspirational goals to sub-target dates.
For certain. And Mr. Miller, Dr. Benitez, I know Alan and myself both really often pride on myself, always pride on ourselves, to do more, right? So the building code will always require us to do X, Y, and Z, we're constantly looking to do more, right? And this would be no different for us as well.
Any other comments or questions, colleagues? If not, then let's move on to the bond resolution, Mr. Miranda.
Perfect. So last section of our presentation, and we'll be on our way. And I think we're right on in terms of time. So bond resolution, really what we've been discussing this particular morning, more so than the previous board updates, is the need that's out there. Dr. Benitez, several board members really emphasized this point and helped me kind of get there as well, just in terms of identifying equity, that tie into education, of course, how we can't do X without Y. It's been very helpful in this discussion this morning, even for myself, right? The master plan was really geared towards taking stock, setting a roadmap for the future, identifying project needs and priorities, which it's done, but really what it's also done is just put this big mark on what that need is, right? So 3.5 to 3.8 billion today, we know that dollar's going to continue to climb, so I just want to reiterate those points, right? We also know that we're working hard and heavy on Measure E right now. So all of the projects we set forth in Measure E and via that program are, you know, in the works and in the planning stage, there's funding allocated to each of those respective projects, and we're not losing sight of that. So everything we've promised voters, we're going to do in terms of those HVAC and modernization improvements, you know, the adding of a new field, synthetic turf field to secondary school sites, the aquatic center projects and so forth. Not only is their funds earmarked, there's been early planning, several of those are complete, right? It's still very much our mission to go and finish every one of those projects. So I want to make sure I separate out kind of the work of Measure E, where we are, where we're headed over the course of the next, you know, four, five, six years or so, and differentiate with this actual need here, right? Because this need in particular not only feeds off of the master plan and each of those 10 project priority buckets, but I strongly believe it gets us further in alignment with our educational mission and vision, right? Being able to add in the adequate facilities we need for early childhood education, making sure that our campuses are as absolutely safe as possible, getting our media centers and facilities up to par with what you saw over at Jordan High School, right? We need to see those type of facilities elsewhere in the district as well. And we've talked about career tech, equity, we just know we need to embark on different type of projects, many of them very unique in nature across different parts of our district boundary. We can only get there with additional funding, and you teed this up for me perfectly, Dr. Benitez, but that's where this bond resolution comes into play. So one of the requirements that's set forth upon all of us and upon board members is before getting before the registrar voters and putting this on a potential ballot for voters to vote on, we have to first take this action where we adopt a bond resolution as a district that really sets the calendar of different events in motion, right? So there's absolutely deadlines with respect to getting on the November ballot for another potential bond measure to get us, you know, and start chipping away at this project list via the master plan projects we've identified. The bond resolution that's before you for vote this evening includes a number of different references to government codes and education codes and codes galore, so I won't go through every one of them, but it's really consistent with the bond resolution we had in the past, right? So if we date back to 2016, you're going to see a number of the different, or same, code references and edcode references that were before you at that point in time as well. Want to highlight, so this is actually a proposed ballot measure text that I'm putting before you right now, right? So this is included in the bond resolution, that's agendized this evening, but really just looking at that first sentence in itself, because I think that's the highlight, right? Or really where we've capitalized the particular phrases. So it just, those things jump out to me, repair, student health, safety, achievement, right? These are all things we highlighted this morning via that particular presentation. And it just so happened to work out that way. We've been working on the language, we've been looking for consistencies and alignment with our facility master plan, all these different exercises, the creation of those 10 project priority buckets, and the language in this resolution. And as I review all of those documents, I see the consistencies and alignment for certain. Last but not least, and then I'll field questions on this particular topic as well, just some of the major highlights in terms of the edcode references. And these are going to be, again, consistent with our Measure E program. When we go, when districts, local educational agencies seek out bond measures for capital improvement projects, local bonds, we have to comply with a number of different things, a host of things, including things that really make us transparent as a school district and community, right? So actual reporting, auditing, the creation of citizens oversight committees, which we've done for previous bond efforts as well, but by and large, what you see here is transparency. We feel very confident that we have the staff and the resources to be able to support a building program. Super excited at the prospects of embarking on these type of projects, right? To be able to go and really impact our educational settings and communities alike, and really hit the mark in terms of excellence and equity for this district from the building side of the house, right? So this is the funding source that helps us get there. As you can see, the proposed bond that's before you is for $1.7 billion, and we highlighted 3.5 to 3.8 billion in need. So again, we're going to be faced with a situation where we have more need than there is dollars available, but we know we need to start somewhere, right? And as we prioritize projects, embark on these type of improvements, it's really going to put our district and our students in a better position. That, I can field questions on the bond resolution, or any one of those items.
Well, I believe in 2016, when we were talking about Measure E, we had identified needs in the amount, I think it was close to 3 billion, but we passed that bond for, I think it was 1.2?
1.5.
Or 1.5. So those needs that were identified in 2016 that would not be covered by the funding from Measure E, are we addressing those needs, have they been rolled over into the needs we see before us with this bond? Is that part of it?
It rolls into this new facility master plan. So every one of those needs, and new needs, right, because things just continue to change and evolve, are all embedded into this new master plan report, and really new dollar figure that we see before us, which is now 3.5 to 3.8.
And also, I think it's important to note that Measure E, I think was titled as school safety, for school safety, and that included the HVAC projects. But I think it's important to note that in the previous few years since 2016, we have used Measure E money in part for our school security projects like single-point entry, the security cameras, and closing all of our campuses with fencing to make them more secure. And I think that's important to note because unfortunately, that's become necessary for schools to do, and we've done it. And I'm hoping that that helps people feel a little bit better about the security of our schools at a time where it's really at the forefront of our minds of everything going on.
Mrs. Craig, if I can comment to that, that's a great question. I just want to be very clear, the promises that were made to the community with Measure E are still in process and will be funded and executed with Measure E. So this resolution in front of you is not money to complete the promises So this resolution in front of you is not money to complete the promises that were made with Measure E. So we will still be completing those promises to the community and completing the work that we had committed to the community with Measure E. That is still happening. This resolution is really to look at all of the new needs, all as we've, as schools in our community and in our nation have transformed since 2016, and the needs of our students and our community have continued to grow, we're really looking with this resolution to meet those new needs that we've identified since 2016.
I appreciate that information, and it makes me think of the past two years. We have needs that we didn't know we had prior to 2020. So I'm very glad to hear that we are meeting the needs that were identified in 2016, and that also we are staying on top of things in the present day. So thank you.
So just on that note, the education code requirements that you said are pretty standard that we've used with previous bond measures. For folks who might be concerned about what those promises were for Measure E and the clarification of, did we use the money? Are we using the money for what we said we would use it for? These are the safeguards that put that in place. So folks can read one through six. I'm assuming this presentation will be available, as well as the facilities master plan and its glorious 488 pages PDF somewhere fairly accessible on the website.
Correct.
So that people can look at those individual schools. They're all going to zero in and find their school and see what the assessment of their particular school is. But about conducting annual and independent financial audits of the process, we do those audits every year. I think we just had an audit presentation just a couple of board meetings ago, but those presentations are available, the findings or the lack thereof, findings and audits are available for folks to see going years back. And the independent oversight committee, they report to the board, so there's presentations available for people, again, who are curious in the past of how that has been done. They can access those records on our bond website. Perhaps we can, you know, have, again, an easy, accessible kind of click, you know, here's the 10 questions you might have about how bonds impact us. But just on that reporting piece and that accountability piece to the community, that we're doing what we say with the money and the procedures in place for them to check on, that might be important for folks.
Thank you, Ms. Curra, for that. All of that information is currently housed on our district website. All of the citizens oversight committee reporting for all of the past years is contained there. All of our independent audit results are all contained in the website. I'll applaud Dave and his department. They do a great job in transparency and communication to our public to ensure that we can show that the monies that we've been entrusted with are being spent for the projects that we've promised the community to be able to bring to the community with these dollars.
I want to apologize to my colleagues and the whole team here. I'm not grimacing at your questions and/or any of the comments that are being shared. I'm having some back issues here, so please don't interpret my grimacing as any reaction to anything that's being said. So I'm going to approach my question slightly different here. At the end of the day, for me, Mr. Miranda, what I'm hearing from the facilities master plan and from this recommendation for a bond measure is equity and excellence requires resources. Bottom line, bottom line. And the resources come from different funding sources. But for us to have serious and deep conversations that align with, we just came out of our LCAP and budget engagement process, one of the big priorities, and this is community telling us, and it's a priority moving forward, is around the social and emotional well-being of students. We've heard how many students are visiting our wellness centers, how much need there is for our family resource centers. We need space, and not just the physical space. It needs to be in alignment with what our educational goals and mission and vision are. We can't do that. We cannot provide wellness centers in spaces that are not set up to actually provide the emotional, mental health, and educational support that our students and families need. Mr. Moskovitz, at our previous meeting, talked about this great, great thing that we're doing moving forward in terms of expanding our enrichment, right? After school, we need facilities, right? Safe facilities to be able to do the kinds of things that, one, our community wants and expects, but, two, that are anchored in our excellence and equity agenda. Our, many parts of our communities, and I'm talking here broadly, Avalon, Lakewood, Signal Hill, and Long Beach, don't have any green space. Their safe havens are our schools, right? So if we're going to rethink, reimagine what community schools do, we have the last two years, as you correctly put it, Ms. Craig, to show us that we do not have the adequate infrastructure capacity as it is to do things like, and I'm speaking to folks that came social distancing at our schools, repurpose, reimagine what we do outside, right? How can we do that on blacktops, where if it's 98 degrees outside, guess how much it is on that blacktop? So if we want to put tents out and have activities and do enrichment, and/or if there's a need to use inside and outside space, we cannot do that without funds. We have folks all the time talk to us about, why don't we have fields? Why don't we have green space at some schools in the district? And we know which schools, which part of town we're talking about. Health and safety, right? So we've talked about sort of the educational mission, and I'm using enrichment because if we're going to have it at every school, then we need to be equitable in what kinds of activities and opportunities and programming we will have. But bottom line for us is, here as a district, we cannot even consider passing policies that are not yet before us if we do not have the facilities to be able to implement those policies. So we passed an anchor pillar equity policy in December. We can't do equity unless we have the facilities to allow for us. Yeah, we can pass a policy, and you've been saying this, like, why are we going to pass a policy that we're not going to be able to uphold or fulfill? All right? So CAC recommendations are coming to us in, is it September or August? And I think we rescheduled. September. I am sure they will have components in there around all means all and inclusion. How do we uphold our aspirational goals around all means all if we do not have the adequate facilities to be able to uphold those? So to me, bottom line is, we cannot fulfill our educational mission and vision. And so, you know, my questions are, and I'll save these for our open session after 5:00, like, you know, why the 1.7 instead of, you know, we have a $3.8 billion need? You know, how this is then, we need to do some community education as well around the questions that Board Member Kerr and Board Member Craig had raised. Those are the kinds of questions that I'm hoping that we can engage in tonight in terms of optics, perception of, hey, in the papers, district's getting all kinds of money, one-time money, why can't we use that money? All right? You know, vibe on the street is, didn't we just pass a bond measure? Well, just, you know, that was a few years ago. But that funds different things that are still going to be done, right? As you said, Alan. So I'd like to sort of get into the meat of it, but the bottom line is, if I am reading our facilities master plan correctly, we cannot, quite frankly, the sustainability piece is a big part of that. Sustainability costs money on the front end. Mr. Marsh, yes, there's a payout that we have to do, but then 20 years down the line, 25 years down the line, 50 years down the line, we don't have to reinvest, right? We have an infrastructure there. So I'll save those parts of the things, but am I missing something here, Mr. Miranda?
Not one bit. So you captured it beautifully. Really not much to add on my side of the house. Maybe two comments. So, one, we do continue to apply for state matching dollars at every possible turn, right? So as we have projects that are eligible and we have district eligibility for our construction improvements, we try and capture some additional state funding, but it still falls significantly short, right? And we're going to continue to do those things, right? We still need those local dollars, really, though, to make a dent into these efforts. The other piece I was going to highlight, albeit a small one, because we discussed portable removals earlier, and I'm going to pick on that example. Even the removal of a portable costs a whole lot of money, right? So that being a smaller project in nature, right? But regardless, we're falling short on the funding side of the house for these improvements, and to get us where we just described.
Dr. Baker, we're one minute over plans. Anything we want to highlight or share before we go to recess?
No, I think it's, thank you, team, for the presentation, and Viva as well, just comprehensive in nature, and I appreciate the packaging of everything together, so it's comprehensive in nature. Yes, thank you. And so we'll recess when you're ready, Dr. Benitez, for 15 minutes.
Let's do that now, if my colleagues are okay with it. Thank you, Mr. Miranda, Mr. Raisin. Thank you, Mr. Mandam, Mr. Raisin. We will continue with our next board workshop item, which is our board governance. Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Dr. Benitez and Board. I am pleased to kick off this second section of the morning around board governance and specifically our transition to a more student outcomes focused board governance approach. So as a member of the governance team, today's hour will be spent in a true workshop opportunity, which is looking at some data, getting to converse with one another, talk about where we've been as a governance team, and then also think about where we are moving forward. And so there are three parts to how we'll spend this time. The first is to review our board governance journey, which is a timeline that reflects a full two years of work that has taken place, and then also thinking about the year ahead and where we will go together. The second part will be looking at the data that we have recently received from the Council of Great City Schools analysis around community visioning. And as a first opportunity for you all to discuss what you see in that data relative to your opportunity to connect with the community and ask some, ask some specific questions of them. And then lastly, we are in the process of making a transition as of next month to a student outcome focused agenda format. And so I want to provide some public opportunity to talk about that so that our community is not caught off guard by how we will transition in the next month or so.
You have three items and a folder there for you. You have a set of slides that you'll be referring to. And then you have a document that's titled Board of Education Community Visioning Community Input Analysis. And lastly, you have a document titled Sample LBUSD Student Outcomes Focused Board Agenda. And so I will use all of those and I welcome, as members of the governance team, I welcome all of the opportunity for you to turn your, your mic on and interject with me. Also want to just acknowledge that all of you in some way have been involved in this process. So Ms. Kerr attended a very specific series, sequence of training with the Council of Great City Schools on student outcome focused board governance. Mr. Otto is involved with the Council of Great City Schools. Mrs. Craighead was involved in our very first self-assessment of the Board of Education and Dr. Benitez has been a sponsor in our work with A.J. Crabbeill. And then to Mr. Otto and Mr. Miller, coming in to new processes, which will be reflected in our first year of work and testing out the onboarding process with us, providing feedback and helping us to think about what we want in print, which shows the systems that are at play for how we manage as a governance team. So with that in mind, I will kick us off. So first thing I want to reflect on where we have been. There was an opportunity, as we think about continuous improvement in our district, an opportunity to take advantage of the transition of superintendents from Mr. Steinhauser to myself in the role of superintendent. Almost simultaneous to that, we had the new board members elected in that next year, which had us really thinking about what it would look like to become a board member after a very long tenure for Dr. Williams and Mr. Meyer. And so with all of that in mind, this opportunity came to really think about not just transition, but what are the structures that are in place to support an effective governance team? And I can think about the, the summer and fall of 2020, really around communication structures and what it would look like in an effective team, a governance team in this case, what it would look like to have good communication structures. And so many of those were developed and then developed with you all in mind from one-on-one meetings and from what the kind of information that you wanted to receive and then how we would work together as a superintendent and board governance team. The other thing that took place during that time was the thinking about systems and what it looks like in our district to have systems that support board work and work of the staff. And so you'll see in the slide pointing to the fall of 2020, where we started to have this conversation about student outcomes and what it would look like to go forward in a new way as a governance team. We had A.J. Crabbeill and staff from the Council of Great City Schools in to facilitate the first dialogue. I can remember we had observers in that process. We were at Browning High School, really just thinking about what we want for the future of those systems. It was also an opportunity for us to develop a board handbook and this idea of onboarding processes. So Ms. Takahashi and myself, with some support from our team members, thought about what would be the first rendition of a board handbook and developed that with, that included processes and protocols as well as advice from other board members who had served prior to that time. And you'll hear me say that we're now in the third iteration of that board handbook as we have grown in our systems and our communication and in working towards more student outcome focused governance, so has that, that handbook reflected that. Thinking about this last year, again, as much work took place in year two as did year one. And so what this slide represents at a high level is thinking about revisions to that handbook, starting to really think about what goals would look like, SMART goals, as Mr. Miller likes to call them, and really thinking about students at the focus of those goals. And so with the guidance of the board, I led off with some, my goals for last year, which you all approved, that in three of the six areas focused on student outcomes and helping us to, to think differently even about an agenda and what conversations would look like at the board level with those kinds of goals in mind. There were a number going through into the fall and winter months, we, we practiced what this would look like. We had now Dr. Brown, Dr. Steve Brown, as he's been called, entertained questions around data and each of the, the board meetings as we engaged in this had a staff report around student data. While it wasn't yet a monitoring calendar, we were practicing what it will be like to use a monitoring calendar that is highly connected to student outcomes focused governance. When we got to the winter months and into the spring, the board engaged in a very intentional process of talking to the community and thinking about what is the community's vision for the school district, which is a different perspective and such an important perspective for the, for board members who represent a community. In that process, I loved that you all paired up. You spent time in schools where you hosted meetings, you talked to community members. We had a consistent process for asking questions, which we're going to look at the data for. And we also conducted a survey that was open for three months on our website for those who didn't participate in person, but wanted to really give their input about the vision for the future of our school district. As we, near the end of the school year, that process was completed, the visioning process was completed. And so today you're going to look at the data that associates with that. The second thing that happened in the last couple of months was a deep dive into this transition for a student outcome focused agenda. That was with support from Mr. North, from a legal perspective and going through every aspect of our agenda to, to develop something that is a primarily consent agenda for reoccurring items, to make time, and I'll talk about it in more depth later, to make time for focusing on student outcomes as the primary feature of a board meeting. And so here we are, thinking about the kickoff to 2022, 2023. And I'm actually going to talk a little bit about the activities of this year and then before the end of the presentation, I'll come back to this for more discussion. But we are in a really monumental time. So in addition, this, this slide is intended to represent, in addition to the work that you all have been doing and we have been doing as a governance team, you've heard that this summer commences the, the start of our strategic planning process. And so important when you see this, this space in between board governance and goals and guardrails and also the district's efforts around strategic planning. And mostly I want to say today, this is not, this slide is not intended to be a roadmap. It's intended to be a glimpse, a glimpse at what's coming and how to think about each of the actions that we take as a governance team in relation to what we hear happening for stu-, for strategic planning. Because in the best case scenario, those happen in tandem with one another. And while the district team is working on strategic planning, of which the board will be involved with, that we're also thinking about how to slow down or speed up the governance processes to align with that strategic planning process. And so what you can see represented is that we are in another iteration for board governance, another iteration of the handbook with feedback from the board and related to this transition in the agenda. This will be a time for board governance that will talk in a little bit about drafting goals and guardrails, which is a next step for the board in its governance practices, moving into a self-assessment, the implementation of this style of agenda that centers student outcomes, and then an opportunity to reflect and to refine as we head into the months of, or the, the months in winter and spring. At the same time, and you've heard a little bit about it and more to come, starting in the next board meeting year, you'll have regular staff reports on the strategic planning process that will engage right away, will engage community. It will engage students in especially students to, different than prior strategic planning processes that we've had. Students will participate in really bringing their voice to what they want for Long Beach Unified School District into the future. And when we get to the spring of next year, the board will have its goals and guardrails and an opportunity to refine them. The strategic plan will be brought to the board for approval. And so there will be a, what I envision, a nexus between all of these procedures and processes that really establish the going forward for Long Beach Unified School District. And so I'm going to take a pause and give the opportunity, when you think about just the two years of work that we have done together, as well as this how we'll move forward together, just from a processing perspective and thinking about board
And as a first opportunity for you all to discuss what you see in that data relative to your opportunity to connect with the the community and ask some ask some specific questions of them. And then lastly, we are in the process of making a transition as of next month to a student outcome focused agenda format. And so I want to provide some public opportunity to to talk about that so that our community is not caught off guard by how we will transition in the next month or so. You have three items and a folder there for you. You have a set of slides that you'll be referring to. And then you have a document that's titled Board of Education Community Vision Visioning Community Input Analysis. And lastly, you have a document titled Sample L B U S D Student Outcomes Focused Board Agenda. And so I will use all of those and I welcome, as members of the governance team, I welcome all of the opportunity for you to turn your your mic on and interject with me. Also want to just acknowledge that all of you in some way have been involved in this process. So Ms. Kerr attended a very specific series, sequence of training with the Council of Great City Schools on Student Outcome Focused Board Governance. Mr. Otto is involved with the Council of Great City Schools. Mrs. Craighead was involved in our very first self-assessment of the Board of Education and Dr. Benitez has been a sponsor in our work with A.J. Crabbe. And then to Mr. Otto and Mr. Miller, coming in to new processes, which will be reflected in our first year of work and testing out the onboarding process with us, providing feedback and helping us to think about what we want in print, which shows the systems that are at play for how we we manage as a governance team. So with that in mind, I will kick us off. So first thing I want to reflect on where we have been. There was an opportunity, as we think about continuous improvement in our district, an opportunity to to take advantage of the transition of superintendents from Mr. Steinhauser to myself in the role of superintendent. Almost simultaneous to that, we had the new board members elected in that next year, which had us really thinking about what it would look like to become a board member after a very long tenure for Dr. Williams and Mr. Meyer. And so with all of that in mind, this opportunity came to really think about not just transition, but what are the structures that are in place to support an effective governance team? And I can think about the the summer and fall of 2020 really around communication structures and what it would look like in an effective team, a governance team in this case, what it would look like to have good communication structures. And so many of those were developed and then developed with you all in mind from one-on-one meetings and from what the kind of information that you wanted to receive and then how we would work together as a superintendent and board governance team. The other thing that took place during that time was the thinking about systems and what it looks like in our district to have systems that support board work and work of the staff. And so you'll see in the slide pointing to the fall of 2020 where we started to have this conversation about student outcomes and what it would look like to go forward in a new way as a governance team. We had A.J. Crabbe and staff from the Council of Great City Schools in to facilitate the first dialogue. I can remember we had observers in that process. We were at Browning High School, really just thinking about what we want for the future of of those systems. It was also an opportunity for us to develop a board handbook and this idea of onboarding processes. So Ms. Takahashi and myself, with some support from our team members, thought about what would be the first rendition of a board handbook and developed that with that included processes and protocols as well as advice from other board members who had served prior to that time. And you'll hear me say that we're now in the third iteration of that board handbook as we have grown in our systems and our communication and in working towards more student outcome focused governance, so has that that handbook reflected that. Thinking about this last year, again, as much work took place in year two as did year one. And so what this slide represents at a high level is thinking about revisions to that handbook, starting to really think about what goals would look like, SMART goals, as Mr. Miller likes to call them, and really thinking about students at the focus of those goals. And so with the guidance of the board, I led off with some my goals for last year, which you all approved, that in three of the six areas focused on student outcomes and helping us to to think differently even about an agenda and what conversations would look like at the board level with those kinds of goals in mind. There were a number going through into the fall and winter months, we we practiced what this would look like. We had now Dr. Brown, Dr. C. Brown, as he's been called, entertained questions around data and each of the the board meetings, as we engaged in this, had a staff report around student data. While it wasn't yet a monitoring calendar, we were practicing what it will be like to use a monitoring calendar that is highly connected to student outcomes focused governance. When we got to the winter months and into the spring, the board engaged in a very intentional process of talking to the community and thinking about what is the community's vision for the school district, which is a a different perspective and such an important perspective for the for board members who represent a community. In that process, I loved that you all paired up. You spent time in schools where you hosted meetings, you talked to community members. We had a consistent process for asking questions, which we're going to look at the data for. And we also conducted a survey that was open for three months on our website for those who didn't participate in person but wanted to really give their input about the vision for the future of our school district. As we near the end of the school year, that process was completed, the visioning process was completed, and so today you're going to look at the data that associates with that. The second thing that happened in the last couple of months was a deep dive into this transition for a student outcome focused agenda. That was with support from Mr. North, from a legal perspective, and going through every aspect of our agenda to to develop something that is a primarily consent agenda for reoccurring items, to make time, and I'll talk about it in more depth later, to make time for focusing on student outcomes as the primary feature of a board meeting. And so here we are, thinking about the kickoff to 2022, 2023. And I'm actually going to talk a little bit about the activities of this year and then before the end of the presentation, I'll come back to this for more discussion. But we are in a really monumental time. So in addition, this this slide is intended to represent, in addition to the work that you all have been doing and we have been doing as a governance team, you've heard that this summer commences the the start of our strategic planning process. And so important when you see this this space in between board governance and goals and guardrails and also the district's efforts around strategic planning. And mostly I want to say today, this is not, this slide is not intended to be a roadmap. It's intended to be a glimpse, a glimpse at what's coming and how to think about each of the actions that we take as a governance team in relation to what we hear happening for for strategic planning. Because in the best case scenario, those happen in tandem with one another. And while the district team is working on strategic planning, of which the board will be involved with, that we're also thinking about how to slow down or speed up the governance processes to align with that strategic planning process. And so what you can see represented is that we are in another iteration for board governance, another iteration of the handbook with feedback from the board and related to this transition in the agenda. This will be a time for board governance that will talk in a little bit about drafting goals and guardrails, which is a next step for the board in its governance practices, moving into a self-assessment, the implementation of this style of agenda that centers student outcomes. And then an opportunity to reflect and to refine as we head into the months of or the the months in winter and spring. At the same time, and you've heard a little bit about it and more to come, starting in the next board meeting year, you'll have regular staff reports on the strategic planning process that will engage right away, will engage community, it will engage students in especially students to different than prior strategic planning processes processes that we've had. Students will participate in really bringing their voice to what they want for Long Beach Unified School District into the future. And when we get to the spring of next year, the board will have its goals and guardrails and an opportunity to refine them. The strategic plan will be brought to the board for approval. And so there will be a what I envision a nexus between all of these procedures and processes that really establish the going forward for Long Beach Unified School District. And so I'm going to take a pause and give the opportunity, when you think about just the two years of work that we have done together, as well as this how we'll move forward together, just from a processing perspective and thinking about board governance, just take an opportunity to hear your comments, to reflect upon the time of those two years, and then to put an opportunity for questions or any other suggestions related to this aspect of the presentation that you'd like to make. So I will open that up, Dr. Benitez or others that want to share anything, ask anything or just provide comment to your experience.
Thank you for the the glimpse, not the roadmap, not only of where we're going but where we've been. I think it's really critical. I think one of the first things that A.J. said in our training around student outcomes focused governance is that student outcomes don't change until adult behavior changes. And that good governance, and he, it's a mantra, he says it all the time, that student outcomes don't change until adult behavior in the system changes. And this and that's part of that intentional shifting and focus of what do we as a governance team talk about? Because we talk about things that are important to us. So if we continue to talk more about student outcomes, the idea that folks will understand that is our primary goal, is that we want to be student outcome focused, that's what we're going to talk about. So we may, as you said, we're going to talk about an agenda shift, may look different, sound different than it has in the past, but it's an intentional shift into making sure from the outside, folks understand that we are focused on student outcomes as our role as a governance team. And that good governance teams are not accidental. They don't happen just because we like each other and we get into a room, but because we train ourselves to focus and to engage with each other and with the work with that student outcome always focus in our brain. So I think we probably all, you know, we're in this time warp of the when we say the last two years and last two and a half years. I think we all thought it would move more quickly, even the strategic plan stuff. It was just work that needed to be done, that had to be trunicated to focus on students in the moment. So it feels right that all of that will come to a nexus in a timeframe when it felt like maybe we weren't moving fast enough, but it feels like we were in a space that we can have really overlapping conversations around all of it. And I appreciate the opportunity for us to talk about it, but also to talk about it so that when there are changes and people see them, we've we've had this opportunity to say why we're headed in that direction and not let people assume why we make changes to things. So thank you for that.
So the 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 first observation that I would make was that I didn't come on board until, in essence, the the winter of 2021. But then I went through an onboarding process, which I thought was terrific. I mean, it was, you know, the onboarding processes that I've gone through in other situations with groups that I've joined usually lasted a couple of hours and they ask you if you had any questions and you didn't have any questions because you weren't sure what you just lived through. But 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 this went on for six months, more or less, and I learned a lot. I've got a a good file and it gave me a good understanding of all the different things that the that the district does. And I'm a bit of a student of governance because I've just thought about it for years and various roles that I've had. And one of the messages that has been communicated to me by the Council of Great City Schools is that the way it works at Unified School Districts is that there's a community at the top, then there's the board, which is kind of in between the the community and the the school staff, the superintendent and and her work. And that what's really important to find out what the community wants and what their values are, what really you, the board establishes its goals, but it does that in consultation with the community. And what I thought at the beginning has been made manifest in this process, and that is it's really hard to do that. It's so hard to do it because, I mean, we joked about it to a certain extent when when these things started because I think I went to the first two and then three of the five meetings and dang, you know, we have 70,000 students or and the same 10 would show up. And I would thought, that's not very representative. How do we, how do we get a better sense of it? And then, by the way, other people show up and then they leave and or they go to, you know, they go out of town. We did it during this pandemic. I mean, all the things that make it difficult, all kinds of things that make it difficult were happening. What I what I concluded, it's really all about relationships, that you have to establish those relationships. And the very word relationship is a is a difficult one because some people want relationships with you for reasons that don't have much to do with what the the what you're trying to do as educators or what we're trying to do to educate students. And so there's a, it's just very, very complicated. And the visioning process that we went through, I was kind of disappointed in for all those and some other reasons. I I got some information, but I didn't feel like I got the information that I really wanted or needed, but that but I also saw that it was possible. And, you know, I've talked to people in the representative groups that we were supposed to talk to and and gone back to them and 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 the people identified as our community partners and almost to a person, they said, oh, we didn't know we were your community partner. You know, we, okay, you know, we, oh, yeah, we work with you, but but it, there's a communication piece that just has to be central and and more stylized than I think that it is. And when Meghan says, things don't change until student outcomes focused government doesn't work until until adult behavior changes. I think that it's so crucial to have an ongoing relationship with the people in the community that that there's an element of trust involved, there's an element of they, they, they don't have complete access to you, but you need to be able to feel like, hey, what's going on here, to develop insights into how things are changing. And by the way, you almost, I almost feel like throwing out the last two years because of the pandemic in terms of what it means because it's been so different, different and so difficult in so many ways that I'm discounting process in that. I don't know if there's a, if we if we can stabilize again, but but it's really important to emphasize that communication, developing those relationships with the people in the community that we can trust and who are insightful and participating because their kids are involved or they are the kids that are involved in this. But it just has to be a major focus of it. I I I think that we've done a decent job of getting out with what we can now at this stage of this development, but we need to to spend a reasonable amount of time on on doing that.
It's a, it's a really good point. And also, when I think about the year ahead, Mr. Otto, this opportunity to get out again into the community and have support from Prospect Studios in the strategic planning process, relationships are over time, allow us to to listen and to hear the perspective of the community. And so while the visioning process may not have felt as robust as we wanted it to, it was a moment in time that will be followed by this ongoing opportunity. And so I think your your point is really important. In fact, based on the relationships that you all hold in the community, that may encourage more participation in the strategic planning process, which will then allow us as a governance team to use that data towards what we want for our students as well. So important point that you've made.
Yeah. Where are you going to add, Mr. Miller?
So first off, I just appreciate how, for me, I'm going to use the word simple, you capsulize the past 18 months as I remember every last piece of these moments. And I think that they have truly been, I'll call it iconic moments to the impact of the board today. With that said, one of the things that I was really appreciative of, and you already heard Doug talk a little bit to it, was the onboarding process. I was quite impressed from my experience and I think it was both informative and full transparency much needed for us to put the names to the departments, to the skill sets. And I I just was really, really impressed with that moment. So I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged that. And as we look at this couple of pages, I think we're only on page four here, of capsulized activities, there's also nuances within that that weren't necessarily talked about, that are really kind of personality components that have been added to the conversations we have at this meeting and in closed section session, especially in regards to my personality, where I know that a lot of the team knows that I use this statement of what does success look like? And everybody knows that that's what I'm going to ask and often that that question is already answered before I can even get to it. And then also the nuance of not only us consistently putting goals around our objectives as a district, but now the use of or the terminology of SMART goals and making that a heightened focus. So those like small nuances, though, aren't necessarily as major capsulizing points as some of these are, have also been major components to the changes of the board. And so I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge those and make sure that I share with you how much I appreciate some of those things. I think that they are going to bode well for not just the team here, but our colleagues out into the district as well.
I'm glad you said that, too. Just to name that each of you, as I look along the table, each of you has had a tremendous influence on what is here. So I'm glad you named a couple of those things in terms of SMART goals, relationships with each other, the mentoring that took place in in addition to onboarding, the mentoring of new board members. So there are a lot of nuances and each of you can take credit for the the direction that we are heading and where we've been the last couple of years. Thank you.
Dr. Baker, I'm going to direct my comments to my colleagues here, and it's an observation. It's based on thinking about the upcoming year, but an observation from from what I heard now and from what I've heard in our board governance conversations within the context of this coming year. Mr. Otto and Mr. Miller already referenced the importance of the onboarding process. And as Ms. Craighead and Ms. Kerr shared, you know, their experience was different and and my experience was different. But I do think from a board development perspective, one of the things that's been important to me within the conversation of governance is having dedicated time at workshop, limited at meetings, but, you know, having time to have conversations amongst ourselves that aren't tied to different other agenda items, right, just on the governance piece. And I think for me, four aspects of this coming year, and and you highlighted on on a couple of them, is conversations around support for us as a board on interpreting and analyzing data, right, that's present either by Dr. C. Brown or or any one of our team, right? I think, and and I'm going to just speak for myself, I I may be looking at data not wrong or right, but differently than either the intent of the presentation and or that some of my colleagues, the lens that they're looking at it. So I think it's worthwhile for us to support each other, but also have strategic conversations around, okay, what's the end game yet? What does student success look like? But student success may look differently based on what my interpretation of our community visioning sessions are. And and not better or worse, just if it's a portrait, I may be looking at one aspect of the portrait. So I think that also goes hand in hand with support that we either may need from A.J. or a strategic planning facilitator around how to interpret and analyze community input as well. And and I'm not suggesting that we don't already do that as individuals here. What I'm talking about is as a board, as a decision-making body. And I know that we have resources, A.J. provided them early, and we've had conversations around different metrics that boards use for that. I think it's worthwhile to anchor our conversations along those lines. So those are two, right? Interpreting and analyzing data, but also interpreting and analyzing community input. Because if our commitment is, and I'm, and I'm, and upholding that we will continue community engagement, it's different when 10 people show up versus 100 people show up. Process-wise, in terms of analysis of the data, you know, you, it doesn't work to do word clouds the same way if you have a small number of or a smaller number of folks participate. So I think that that's two. With reference to the transition to the shift to our student outcomes based agenda, Dr. Baker, I think we we need a conver, we need to continue the conversation as a board around what the process of developing an agenda looks like in material terms, right? And and whether that's the public, you know, that has come in and and wanted to place items on agenda and what criteria, we've already established it, but I don't think we've put into practice, you know, what things do we consider in terms of public agenda? And again, we have the words on paper, but having a real conversation and also vis-à-vis when we want to place items on agenda. So again, we have the process on paper, but I think we have to reaffirm and or remind and or detail out what that what that looks like. So in terms of the 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 development of the actual agenda, right? And then lastly, we have an example of it. One of the things that worked for me this time, although it's still, my preference is not to have it as close to our workshop time, the distribution of materials and any supporting documentation, I really have found the opportunities that we have had to have individual briefing sessions ahead of time, helpful, all right? Particularly like the FMP today, but not exclusive to that. I have found, whether it's been business department items, we did the same thing for redistricting, we had conversations, materials ahead of time. I still think there's a, we have to find the sweet spot as to how far ahead of time it's useful to us, because if you give it to us three weeks ahead of time, we may not read it thinking, oh, meeting isn't next week. But also getting it the Friday before is still tough or the Thursday before. So I think that part of it, I have appreciated, having an opportunity to be briefed, even if it's just individually. So so I'm saying that in the context of if if we are going to move, which we are, to student outcomes based, data, we need to figure out what's the, how do we maximize our expertise and skills? But also any prepared documentation, because I know how much time and effort goes into them. I mean, this is, this is a monumental task, right? And so just to to either trivialize or minimize from a community's perspective, a 500-page document, I think it behooves us to figure out what's the best way for us to receive materials, make sense of the materials, and then be able to have a conversation, right? Instead of this sort of, it's dialogical, but it's sort of dichotomous sort of presenter and then we sort of go back and forth. So just things for us that we've all said we want to do, that we've all said that we've committed to, that I think that's, you know, my goal for this coming year would be to have those intentional conversations with dedicated time to them.
You know, I think it might be interesting, I'm flipping back through some of the notes from our first meeting with A.J., and so much got thrown at us. And I was doing it simultaneously, so felt like I had a better handle on it. And looking at the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Manual again now is very different. And so perhaps as a board, we pull that back out and we talk about it, because I know you're talking about data and I was just reading, when we get our monitoring calendar in place, we're going to have a year.
Yep.
And know what presentations on which data we're going to get for a year. So the public can wonder when we're going to hear about that and they can look at a monitoring calendar and say, oh, that's happening in October. Yeah, again, we all want to know all the information all the time, but if we if we really create a monitoring calendar that allows staff to prepare those in-depth things, we know that two board meetings from now, we're going to talk about a particular know that two board meetings from now, we're going to talk about a particular piece. And in the manual, and I'm, again, looking back and remembering, you know, how it is in an ideal world, that when we have data in front of us, that as board members, we need to be focused on the who, what, why, and how. Who are we talking about in the data? What circumstances are surrounding the data? What phenomenons are helping what's happening in the data? And what will bring out about a greater change? Like, who's struggling the most? Who's getting the most? What else do we need to know? Why did it particularly work in one place and not the other? Like, we have all of that in there, and I think at the time it was presented to us, it was just so much new and different that we had done, that it might behoove us as a board to go back through the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Manual again. Because also within there is the self-evaluation tool of how do we look at our own progress? In student, board will lead with one voice, where was one I was looking at? How are we leading with transparency and including stakeholders? And it has metrics of, are you getting zero points? Like, there's those self-check marks that I think at the time, we couldn't, I couldn't wrap my brain around quite as much. And now looking at them eighteen months later, they make a lot more sense, because we've done enough of the work, or tried to do enough of the work, that I can see in our glimpse of where we're going forward, how that would look. Whether it's adopting goals and guardrails, but even the one, the board will devote significant time monthly to monitoring progress towards the goal. So once we've set the goals, we've set the monitoring calendar, now, how much of our board time is it, the board invests no less than 25% of its total board authorized public meeting minutes to monitoring goals? So we're going to commit to a certain amount of time. That means we're meeting student outcomes. And then there's not meeting, and there's approaching, and then there's mastering, where a board invests no less than 50% of its total time monitoring goals. And that those meetings, there's the business part that moves quickly, but the bulk of those meetings are, again, talking about that. And that's the continuum of, we're starting to get there, but we do have some materials that are from the past that I think we could revisit as a board to help us with some clarity as we move forward. So if we pull those back together, it might be helpful.
It's a great recommendation. I'm tracking on your recommendations. It's also something, I'll say that AJ Crabill from the Council of Great City Schools has been very complimentary of the work that we've done in proceeding towards better and continuous improvement. He also has offered his coaching support to us as a governance team, and so that would be a really good opportunity for him to come in and do a session that really helps to do that. The year ahead, too, I will, I think of it as practicing, so a draft of goals and guardrails. We're preparing a monitoring calendar that will then need to be perhaps massaged to match up to the board's goals and guardrails, but a year of practice. And that practice should include, as you've stated, Ms. Kerr, opportunities for reflection, and not just personal reflection, but team in public kind of reflection. So appreciation for that. And Dr. Mina, I just want to name, too, that, I mean, I love the request around support for data analysis and interpretation. All of us need that, especially when we are trying to transform the way that we think about data. That previously had a lot to do with summative data on an annual basis, and the systems that we're putting in place now allow us more of a formative conversation with an eye-ready system that we can respond to, that we can talk a lot about. And it focuses on growth and acceleration, not just the annual data that has been historically what we have had to look at. So I think all of us in the room, and those who are not in the room today, can say, yes, that would be a great opportunity for support. Any other process kinds of comments or questions? Thank you for what you're up. Yes, Ms. Rado.
I would just elaborate just a little bit on what I had said before, in terms of the difficulty of getting the meaningful community input. I was assigned five groups to get in touch with. One of them was a Filipino group on the west side, and I couldn't get in touch with anybody, and I kind of went to where the offices were, the offices weren't there anymore. I actually had a very good friend whose wife was Filipino and who had recently died, but he knew the community well. And so I talked to him, and he said, oh, you know, that used to be the community, but it's different now, and a lot of those people moved out. And so the dynamics of this are just, everyone is different. And you've got to kind of get a beachhead of who's out there and how do we talk to them and whatnot in order to be successful. And it's very upfront-loaded with time to develop those things. And it's just, I learned a lot along the way in talking to people, but it just takes time. And that's why, kind of seconding what Megan says, is you've got to really devote what it takes to get to the place where you're, people in the community are people that you know, not everybody, obviously, but so that you can move forward. And it's not just for this purpose, it's just in your job as a member of the board.
Yeah. And I'd also just like to acknowledge, in the spirit of what you're talking about, Ms. Rado, that you approved a contract at the last board meeting for us to work with Prospect Studios in the strategic planning process. Our team listens very carefully to your analysis of things and to the way that you talk about your aspirations for our district. In thinking about the redistricting experience as well as community visioning, both the positives and the challenges that went with that, that was part of the criteria that was used to vet partners, paid partners in this case, but paid partners for working through the strategic planning process. So you'll learn more, starting the next board meeting, about Prospect Studios and their work in communities, and with students, and in harder-to-reach communities, and both the experience that they bring to us and their expertise in connecting with really diverse, beautiful communities, like our Long Beach Unified Community. So, but we have been listening to both the challenges and the successes that you've experienced, and that has been built into how we will go forward. So I'll make a transition to this opportunity, just to take a look, a first-pass look. And so today is not a test, this is just a first-pass look at some of the community visioning data. There are slides that go with this, and your second handout that says "Community Input Analysis" is a handout that also provides the same information. And so this first image was a compilation of the entirety of community feedback and represents the most frequently occurring words related to community vision. It is not lost on me that the largest word, which represents the most often-stated word, is around students. And while that might seem like an obvious, in some communities, that is not the word that would appear most often. There are pressures and getting off the mission of the school district, that folks who weigh in on the work of a school district don't often see eye to eye with the district. And so with students at the center, I don't take that for granted, that our community is very student-centered, supportive of the work of the district, but also have aspirations for how to improve education and what they want for our students in this district. So here's my plan. I'm going to go through the slides, just to acclimate you to what's there, and then give an opportunity for us just to quiet down, take a look at that data. Again, note, not necessarily that you have to respond, but just any, you know, ah-haws or noticings that you have as we go through the questions. So there were a series of questions that were asked in all of the opportunities in person, in five community sessions, as well as in the virtual sessions and the survey that existed on our website for three months. And so each of these is a compilation of the analysis that AJ Crabill did on the data. That data was in several forms. It came in the form of transcribed charts, it came in the form of documentation through our website and those who are responding virtually, and this is the analysis that AJ offers back to us. So the first question, I'll just repeat the questions. The first question is, what are your hopes and dreams for students in LBUSD? And both in the slides for the public viewing, but also in your handout, you have the analysis, the percentages of respondents around that question. The second question, what do you want for your child and all LBUSD students to know, now kind of narrowing into those early learning and elementary grades, to do by fifth grade? And then a similar question, what do you want your child and all LBUSD students to know and be able to do by eighth grade? So thinking about our maturing students into those middle years. And then a related question, what do you want your child to know and be able to do by 12th grade? And then just opening it up, not creating a mindset that there is an answer, but opening up another way to ask that question. What do you want your child and all LBUSD students to know and be able to do in general? And trying to get a different perspective, or even a more well-rounded perspective from our community. And then lastly, this question, when we think about our community and wanting, again, to open up the lens of community, what will bring out the greatness in each LBUSD student as our final question? And so I'll just, I want to take pause and give about five to seven minutes of either reading time, highlighting time, and then again, this is not, today's session is just the kickoff, putting this into public space, what the data has been for the start of this next conversation, which the next conversation takes us into the board forming its first version of goals and guardrails to practice for next year. So with that in mind, take a few moments to look at the community feedback and any noticings, wonderings that you can do. Then we'll offer an opportunity just for a first-pass discussion for anybody that would like to share their notice and their wondering. So take a few minutes of reading time.
Or something, question three. I think that slide has really moved me. It's what I also heard in our Black Student Achievement Initiative video, about students wanting to feel valued and cared for and welcomed and appreciated and honored. And I think that's the how, that we get to the what, right? Being proficient in or about, being ready for, being fluent in. So to me, that's how I'm thinking about the input that we have so far, right? That these are, question three, these are things that we hear from, we've heard from our students, we hear from our students. We've prioritized particularly with our restorative restart this past academic year, but that's the how that gets us to the what students should be able to know and be able to do in general, all right? And so that's what I'm thinking about.
Juan, you okay? Speak here.
Oh, thank you, yes. Yes, sorry.
Often, outside of the city of Long Beach, and while, when I'm here in the city, people ask, why am I such a Long Beach homer? And I am, I love this city, I love this district. But there's a couple of things that make our city special. One in particularly is not the rich culture of one demographic or another, it's the rich diversity within our city. And so one of the things that, when I think about as one of our roles as part of that community, and in alignment with question number three, and what brings out our greatness, is the enforcement of the diversity in those cultures. And so to hear and see that comment in particular rise to the top as one of the main ideas within our community in regards to what they would like to see, and only further confirms my thoughts and my feelings as well. And I recognize the uplifting of our diversities as something our district should be focused on, but I also recognize it as not just an appreciation of different cultures, but also the education of the many people that live in the city. And so recognizing it not just as an appreciation, or a way to show appreciation to different cultures, but to inform and educate those. So I just wanted to make sure that that piece wasn't lost in that.
So in going through these things fast, what I came up with was that we want our students to be recognized for who they are, in every sense of that word. We want them to be on a path where they're growing and maturing with confidence going forward, so that by the time they complete their education, they feel supported and nurtured, if, that's not a very good word. And finally, that, sorry, finally, that they're proficient in moving forward academically or into the workforce. And that's the encapsulation of. And that's the encapsulation of all that there.
For me, it feels like there's a real opportunity for our conversation around guardrails. So we'll set goals that are specific to academic goals based on some of these, but I heard some of the same themes this morning when we were talking about our facilities master plan, equitable access to programs, student wellness, facilities that support safe learning. And so as we look at what our guardrails are, which are those values that we need to hold the district accountable to, you know, there's a lot around wellness that we wouldn't implement a program or build a building that doesn't provide a safe and supportive thing. Like, those are the kinds of things when we talk about guardrails. And so for me, these lift up some of those opportunities to say, we're going to create spaces, we're not going to create a space that does not lift up the cultural diversity and strength of our community, that we would never bring in a program that would violate that. That feels like a guardrail kind of conversation based on the values that I see across there. So it's heartening that there are similarities in, you know, the 604 people that they talked to about specifically about place, but then when we talked about what we want students to be able to do and know and how we get there, there's overlap there. So a real opportunity as we move forward in the planning and the practicing to look at how those can match up really well to support students.
So I really appreciate that point of, we were gathering this information to develop goals, but it also helps us in developing the guardrails. And I appreciate how you, Dr. Benitez brought it down to the point of it's the how we're going to get to the what, because that's just as important as the what. And what we measure, what we look at is what will improve. So to know that our communities value culture and their, you know, language maybe that they bring with them, that kind of thing. And Mr. Miller, your point about it's not just an appreciation for other cultures or ethnicities, but an education, and that's the business we're in is education. So to honor that, I think that's probably one of the most important things we're tasked with is how we do that. If we can feel, if we can have our students feel valued and welcome and safe in our schools, they're going to succeed. And so that's something that we need to absolutely focus on. And it does come up very high in each of these questions. It comes up very high. So we have to make sure that we're honoring that value of the community.
Thank you for first draft thinking, as we often call it, and just your notice and wonderings. I think something that I'd like to just point out, what you're doing and the continual observations that happen in the strategic planning process will help us just to coalesce this data with data that will come in through that process. But we're not going to stop and wait for that to happen. I think that's part of the story of the last two years is at any point, we could have stopped and said, there's too much going on to make this transition. But as with other things that we've done, laying a foundation, taking a next step, trying something out and moving towards what we aspire to has been our way. And so that will be, will continue to be the way of the year to come. And so specific to that, the last thing for us to just talk about briefly is this transition to a student outcome focused agenda format. So there's a screenshot on this slide. You actually have a double-sided handout that just gives you a little bit more detail of what this will look like. What's before you has come from a couple months of work, legal analysis with Mr. North, with Ms. Takahashi and myself, and really thinking about the aspiration to center student outcomes. And so on a sheet of paper, doesn't do justice, but just want to be really transparent about what we're going to be trying out. It may be clunky the first few meetings. We may have to stop and say, here's what's happening right now. This is a consent agenda. But in essence, moving towards a student outcome focused agenda is a prioritization of time spent talking about outcomes and the monitoring calendar. In order to do that, something gives. And so our, the expertise that is supporting us in this process, the what gives is that things that are of standard nature, such as procedures, items not requiring deliberation that come every year can be put into a consent calendar, a consent agenda. And Brent has supported us in looking into all the kinds of things that would go into a consent calendar. What that also means is as the board has done previously, you're prepared on the consent calendar before you come into the boardroom. So it's, if you're voting on a consent calendar, it means that homework has been done, committee meetings have been held, and each of you in your voting, you're representing that you've done your homework and that there's no item that you want to pull. It also means that if there's something that you want more deliberation on, that you've done your homework on and you say, you know, I think it's really important that we talk about this, at any time, something can be pulled out of a consent item or can be, you can ask for explanation by staff. So it doesn't, it doesn't lose the transparency of what's on the agenda. It just frankly speeds up the process of dealing with standard business items to make room for more focus on students. And as you pointed out, Ms. Kerr, the more adult behavior changes, that is the way, that's en route to our focus on students changing. So two significant changes you'll see in this format. The first is under staff report, there will be a standing item around the presentation of student outcomes that is also related to the monitoring calendar. So you'll know what's coming ahead of time. And in a best case scenario, those reports will be to you far in advance. So you're not just getting a presentation that you have to process and come back to the next meeting for, you're actually looking at something ahead of time. So when one of us talks about that data or collectively, we talk about student outcome data and the programs that we're talking about, you have an opportunity to ask questions or to weigh in. And back to what you shared, Megan, a set of questions that are focused on student outcomes. The second part, you see that second arrow pointing to consent calendar. So this is an example, not an exhaustive list, but an example put together to reflect what does it mean to have a consent calendar? So things like approval of minutes, the certificated personnel report, classified personnel report, instruction report, finance report. So while those things will come quickly, it requires that you all have studied and if you want something pulled out for further discussion, you do it. If not, it goes quickly during a board meeting, which in essence creates time for more discussion about students and about the work in our classrooms and in our schools.
Dr. Baker, if I may, just on that.
Please do.
I think as an example, using this example, this also puts a little bit more credence into our respective committee assignments.
Yes.
Right? We had a conversation, I think, two years, is Brent, two years ago, Brent, like, okay, when were these committees actually constituted and for what purpose? And so whoever then is on those committees, right?
Yes.
If there are questions, it's not just to staff, all right? It's to, it could also engage the folks that are on those committees that have presumably met with staff, done their homework and bring particular conversations along that as well.
And to go with that, as we do our homework, that if we do have specific questions, that we can refer to the department who, and say, can someone answer my question about this? Those answers can be distributed to the whole board saying, a board member asked this question, here's an answer ahead of time. Again, it goes back into my behavior needing to always use me. My behavior, making sure when I read through that I don't save that question necessarily just for committee, that I fire off an email that says, I had three questions on the consent calendar. Can someone get me the information so that we have it ahead of time? And so that's, again, not something that I have done. I've done occasionally, if I've had a question, I know I've reached out to you, me on different things, make this make sense to me, I'm not quite sure where we are, but really formalizing that as part of our responsibility as board members when we do. When I do my board prep, that I do my board prep, I fire that off, again, with enough time for staff to be able to answer. So if we're going to ask staff to get us things seven days before the meeting, then I need to be on top of it, read through it, glance at questions, and then give staff a couple of days to gather that information so that they're not on the spot when I come in for a meeting.
Yeah. I appreciate what you're sharing publicly as well, because I know from my interactions with each of you, how much time you spend preparing for a board meeting. I see the way you highlight your materials. I know the questions that you ask, the public doesn't always get an opportunity to know that. So I'm glad you shared what you shared, Megan.
That's funny you said the public, because my, my comment is in regard to the public. If we're going to be doing an internal email inquiry or whatever, that would be taking the place of our questions in the public meeting. How, how do we do that? Or can we do that and inform the public at the same time? Because when we ask a question at the meeting, then everybody has the ability to hear the question and the answer. And so I'm wondering about how that's going to work, how, what that looks like. And then also the items that are on the sample agenda for the consent calendar. Just to clarify, these items would still be on the agenda available to the public. So the public would still have all the information, it's just that we won't be discussing it in detail during the meeting. I just kind of want to make that point to let the public know that the information is going to be available, we're just going to be voting on it kind of as a block and not going into detail at the meeting.
Right. That's a great description, Ms. Craighead. So everything will continue to be available as it is now. The backup documentation will be available, but it comes, as you've described, as a batch or a block. So voting on the consent calendar happens all at once unless there's an item pulled out. But the idea is that when homework is done, questions are asked, with some exception, you'll pull an item and that's absolutely okay. But in most cases, these are routine aspects of business that are part of your regular study and preparation for a board meeting and take less time when they're handled as consent.
And I'm glad that we're talking about the business committee positions, because I think that's something most people don't realize that we do as board members, is that we all have our assignments as far as serving on a, on a committee. And as I think about it, I'm thinking, well, we have a lot of questions that we bring up in committees that don't come to the public meeting, but it's clarifying information so we as board members understand the issues and understand what's happening. And we don't always bring forward all of those questions to the public meeting. That would really extend the meeting because we serve on several different committees.
Brent, I'm sure you're going to reference, I was, so I was thinking, just I want to clarify before Brent jumps in. We're not meeting together in committees. We're each individually on a separate committee. So at no time do we ever meet that's not a posted agenda item, nor do we interact on anything related to the business. Go ahead, Brent.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to add in response to your first question, Ms. Craighead, that you already have consent calendars currently. If you think, for example, about the gifts that you receive, think, for example, about the contracts that you receive, all those are already, I would call them smaller consent calendars, and I regularly see you calling them out, say, hey, I'd like to thank the so-and-so group for donating this, we really appreciate it. Or I've got a question with respect to this contract. And so you would continue to be able to do that, just, just as you've been doing. If it was something, though, that was going to require more substantive discussion, I'm not so sure about this contract and I have some concerns, yada, 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 that would be one that you would pull and then it would be discussed and voted on separately. So what you have been doing already is a really good example of what you'll continue to be able to do with this larger grouping of consent items. Does that make sense?
I was going to say the one thing, and you're talking about how we would pull something, which we would always have the right to be able to pull something, aboard policy adoption. So potentially, had the equity policy come to us in this kind of consent calendar, I'm guessing at least one of us would have pulled to say, let's have a discussion about that one and vote on that one separately so that we could do that kind of bigger conversation. So it doesn't preclude us from doing that kind of pulling. It just, when they're, again, more standard issue, this is something we do every year, this is a routine thing, it's just one vote as opposed to seven separate votes.
Either for discussion or in some of those cases for celebration, like, holy cow, are we proud of what we've just done, right? You might not want that to be in something like that. I think, for example, about our, well, there's been a number of policies that you would pull for just exclamation points and emphasis.
So in closing, I'm actually, as we're nearing our time for this morning, I'm just going to go back to slide four, just as a reminder. So I've taken a lot of notes about the path forward and just your request for a review of the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Manual, I think it's super wise, requests around board support for data analysis and how to, how to really look at community input analysis, thinking about revisiting in the board handbook, the criteria for putting items on the agenda, and processing of things like the opportunities for materials ahead of time and the opportunity to ask questions. So lots for us to think about, just to name a couple of next steps. So in August, we will transition and we'll practice and be public about our practice of a first use of an agenda of this format. And then also, this will be an opportunity in the next couple of months for the board to draft goals and guardrails related to the community information we have now, again, as a, as a working draft, but to try out this opportunity to set goals and guardrails with support from the Council of Great City Schools in AJ and to conduct a self-assessment again after, after two years. So that was October of 2020. So two years later to say, where are we now? And then to have that as for public consumption. And then lastly, I'll just rename on this slide, this opportunity of going into strategic planning and seeing the nexus between board governance, community engagement, and strategic planning process. So I imagine in the months ahead, you're going to feel that difference and be able to do a lot of sense-making as you have done today around the data that we're seeing in that process and how it can be used to further inform the board's work in governance. So thank you for the good input today and I'll pass it back to you, Dr. Baker.
Just as you were saying that, Dr. Baker, so since we're doing a practice run in August, it might be helpful for Dr. C. Brown to, if he hasn't already sort of seen this, to also think about in his presentation of data, I mean, I pulled out just four words here in terms of proficiency, preparedness, readiness, and fluency. All right? And since you mentioned, again, just with the I-ready stuff around growth and acceleration, that's already one way of, for us to align as we're developing our board goals and guardrails, sort of how we're interpreting and analyzing data, right? Are students ready to do X, Y, and Z? You know, whatever that is, I think it would be helpful to refer back to this as we're sort of trial running that August and September outcomes-based agenda. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I didn't want to lose the thought, Dr. Baker.
Well, thank you for a great morning on two really important topics to our district, the compilation of thinking about the facility master plan, the resolution that's before you tonight, and the resolution for bond that's before you tonight, and then the green policy that also you'll be asked to review this evening. So it was a really, really good morning of learning and discussion.
Thank you, colleagues. We will reconvene in a little while. And I believe we have lunch? Okay. Thank you, everyone.